9:06 and we certainly have a quorum. So I would like to call this meeting to order. This is the meeting of the State Board of Education, regular meeting, 16 December. Time is 9:06. Would you please introduce yourselves, starting with Sabina?
I am Sabina Broschew. I'm a student member and I'm from Williston.
Thank you, Sabina. Dan French.
Dan French, Secretary of Education.
Bill. Okay, that's a signal from Bill Mathis that his audio is not working. Jenna.
Jenna O'Farrell, St. Johnsbury.
Oliver.
Oliver Olson, Lennerdary.
Peter.
Peter Pelz, Woodbury.
Angelita.
I'm Angelita Peña, student representative for Bristol.
And Jennifer.
Good morning, Jennifer Samuelson from Windhull.
And I'm John Carroll from Norwich. Good morning to you all and thank you all for being here. Did I get you, Kim? I'm sorry.
I don't think so, but that's okay. Kim Gleason from Essex.
I tried to go down alphabetically in my... So, well, good morning all. We have an interesting meeting today. Bill, are you able to communicate with us? You can't. You're muted.
He's not muted. Like on the screen, it shows that he's unmuting himself, but it has to be the audio somehow on his end.
Yes.
Yeah, I think there's a mute button on his headset that is probably engaged.
No, not so.
He may want to leave his video going, but call him with his cellphone.
Oh, yes, he's done that before, right?
Yes, so that we can hear him when he speaks.
Okay, all right. Bill, do you have the number for calling in? I'm taking this moment just because Bill had a possible amendment to the agenda that he might wish to discuss. I don't know. Bill, are you able to hear us? Suzanne, do you see his call coming in?
I do not. Bill, you're going to need the conference ID as well, which is 245-256-448, and then hit pound.
We'll make a little flexibility in the rules while Bill does that. Let us just move on to the consent agenda and we'll double back and allow a possible amendment to the agenda.
Mr. Chair, sorry to be a stickler for the rules, but if Bill's amendment is substantive, we really actually don't have... You as the chair do not have the latitude to move that around. By law, we have to take that up before any other business, the amendment to the agenda. So if you know what the amendment to the agenda is, I would propose that you go ahead and tell us what it is and let's put it on the agenda.
All right, Oliver, thank you. I'm perfectly willing to go to jail for this, but it's all right. We'll proceed. I think I can... Bill, are you hooked up? Can you speak? We're still not hearing you.
We're okay to take the matter up later on in the agenda. You just need to say what the amendment is.
Right, so the topic would be the administration of comprehensive examinations such as NAP and ESBC and what the schedule for them might be. Both of these are concerns that Bill has raised. He has communicated a little bit with the secretary about it. And so perhaps during the secretary's statement, my report is very brief, so we could add some time into the secretary's statement for conversation about this. But that'll be coming up quickly, Bill, so you've got to get yourself hooked up somehow. So let us go on to the consent agenda. And on the consent agenda is this month... The only item on the consent agenda is the minutes from the last meeting. Is there a motion to adopt the minutes?
I'll move.
It's been moved by Jennifer Samuelson to adopt the minutes. Is there a second?
All seconded. This is Oliver.
Seconded by Oliver Olson. Is there discussion? Are you ready for the question? All those in favor of adopting the minutes as presented, please indicate by raising your hand.
Aye from here.
Okay, thank you. I believe it's unanimous. Thank you. Are there any board member announcements? Any board members wish to make any announcements? Hearing none. We're happy to hear from our two students. Let us start with you, Angelita.
Hi, everyone. So this past month has been mildly crazy. We got our first COVID case in our district and at our schools at Darksborough Middle School. So there was a lot of shutdowns specifically for that school, and then they started back up. But obviously, it's a little freaky. There has also been a lot of debate on the guidelines at my high school. Some teachers have apparently forgotten the guidelines and community council passed mask breaks at the schools. So there was confusion with teachers to allow students to take off their masks inside the building, which has occurred. And we've been trying to get the message out that, no, you cannot take your masks off inside the school, but now it's starting another conversation of, well, what do we do with students to have a mask break? Which I don't fully understand, but apparently there were some complaints to the school by students that it was too hard to keep the mask on and it was distracting them from their schoolwork, which I think is just a bunch of crap. But, you know, it is what it is. So that's been a debate at our school on what we should do, and obviously, we can't break the guidelines, but people are trying to make their way around it just so they can take their mask off. Perhaps this is off-topic, but it has also been a really big thing at my school about the Black Lives Matter movement. There has been a lot of complaints from parents about that this isn't a topic that should not be happening and it is making some students uncomfortable and some students refuse to come to school until we take our flag down. But I think that's just an interesting thing to bring up, considering the craze about the Black Lives Matter movement has kind of died down, but I still think it's an important topic. And me, I play devil's advocate just to stay neutral, which obviously does get me in trouble sometimes, but I think it's an important thing to think about. So yeah, that's my update.
Well, that's a very interesting update, right? I'm tempted to say disturbing, but that would be my point of view. Thank you for that, Angelita. Let us go on to Sabina and then perhaps we might see if there's any comments from members of the board. Sabina, let's hear from you.
I first off just want to thank Mr. French for inviting Angelita and I both to the press conference. Afterwards, I heard from people that had seen it and either knew my parents or knew me, and they spoke to hearing students, kind of asked the public to not, you know, gather over a break was, you know, they thought that it was really nice and they appreciate it. So thank you for giving us that opportunity. After that, I kind of started to think, like, you know, after seeing how many people, you know, took that survey so positively and really engaged with it and took the evidence to heart that we found, it kind of made me think, like, if we can find another really important topic to do a survey about, that way we can inform the public more about students' perspectives. And so the next topic I'm kind of trying to take up right now is mental health, because I feel like with the postponement of winter sports, and then at least at my school, we can't have in-person clubs really anymore. So the only people I am seeing are the people in my classes when I go to school on Monday and Tuesday. Otherwise, it is all virtual and I'm just at home with my family. And so I think for a lot of kids who aren't as privileged as I am to have a good home life, I can't imagine the amount of stress and pressure they are on for those that they're stuck at home without any sort of outlet. And so I have a family friend who is a professor at St. Mike's and reached out to some of his colleagues in the mental health department, and so I'm hopefully going to be working with the psychology department, sorry, and working with them to try to put together a survey that will properly capture, you know, how kids are feeling. Because when I sat down with the Student Network and, you know, just my brain to think about questions and how to do it, I was like, how do I, you know, ask kids the question that we want? Because we realize that at a lot of schools, there's still stigma surrounding mental health. And when kids here don't think that it's okay to not, you know, have bad mental health. So that's kind of where I'm headed next, and I'm hoping that that can just bring some light to the public and to see that, you know, even though kids, we are adaptive and we can handle a lot of different changes, you know, some more than adults can because our brains are still growing, we're still struggling. And, you know, in a lot of places, kids might not be getting as much support as they need. So and I think that that's just something that's really important and that we need to kind of speak about. My school in general, things have been, you know, as they have been since the beginning, not much has changed. I haven't heard of a COVID case at our school, so that is good. Someone did test positive, however, they had symptoms, so they didn't come to school. So they didn't have any close contact with anyone in the school building. So other than that, it's been, you know, as good as it can be.
Thank you. Thank you, Sabina. Thank you both for your reports. Very interesting.
John, could I ask them a quick question? This is Peter.
It's Peter.
I'm just kind of curious, from your standpoint as students at the school, what your perception is, is how are the students at large doing? You know, you must have a terrific sort of differentiation between how engaged students are or not. Do you have any read on that basis from looking at the full spectrum of the students in your class or school?
Can you restate that? You cut out mid-part for me and I couldn't hear it.
I'm just wondering, from your perspective as a student at your schools, how the rest of the students are doing at large from your perception in regards to their education? That's my question. Thank you.
Yeah, I think it's really hard. I mean, how do you hold kids accountable on those Tuesdays and Thursdays when all they're given is a Google Classroom assignment and, you know, they can go off and do whatever? I don't really have a lot of kids whom I speak with, and a lot of the classes I'm in are, you know, classes that are either, you know, a little easier in the sense of if you pay attention in class, you can do fine on the tests. And so from what I have seen, teachers have been good about supporting students and kind of either noticing when they're struggling or providing that support before they're even struggling. But I mean, then again, I have, what, three classes I'm in and there's like, you know, seven other kids in that class. So that's not really speaking for, you know, the school as a whole in terms of our, like, you know... My God, how many is it? Like 1,200 kids? So I haven't seen much of kids struggling at CBU, but that's just my perspective. I'm sure it's very different at Angelita's school.
Yeah, it's mildly hard to answer that question, considering I don't see that many people. So as a general knowledge, I'm on community council and obviously, I get to communicate with staff and the principal and all of those guys. But from my knowledge, there hasn't been any educational struggle. Teachers have been good about catching up with that, especially since it's easier, since all of our work is online and they can just kind of see the class as a whole and all of their grades and how well they're doing. I know for a fact that there's another school that I have heard a lot about, considering I have a lot of family that work there, and I know like 50% of kids have been failing all their classes at that school. So and that's coming from someone that works at that school and handles the grades of that school. So our schools have been good, obviously, but we don't know how all the other ones are doing. And considering that we have a larger student body and a more, not wealthy, but we don't live in a poor group, but yeah, I just know that. Some schools are not doing that great, but in general, our schools are doing fine.
Peter, were you present for the meeting at which Angelita and Sabina presented their survey?
I'm not certain.
You would remember it if you were.
What month was that? I just think I missed one in September, but if that's the one, I was unable to attend that meeting.
Well, the survey was, first of all, excellent and very well executed and very well presented by our two student members. What it seemed to show was what you might expect, that there's a wide distribution of experience. The survey seemed to show that for the great sort of middle, third to middle half of the students, school was okay, but not great this year compared to other years. For some of them, school was really a disaster this year, maybe a quarter. And for maybe the other quarter, school was surprisingly good. And I think part of what affects this is very much the student's situation in terms of support at home, internet access, and even the cohort of other students that they study with and hang out. I see Jennifer has a comment, a question?
Yeah, I was going to say, Sabina, I love your initiative with doing a follow-up survey about mental health. I think that's a fantastic idea. And I was going to say, I don't know if you have the contacts for some of the schools in the southern part of the state, but I'm happy to put you in contact with the heads of school there or provide you with the email addresses, whatever would be helpful.
Yeah, that would be amazing, because I have the booklet with all the email addresses, but at the same time, having that personal connection of knowing who is reaching out to you makes principals all the more likely to distribute that survey. So definitely, once we have that finalized, I will definitely reach out and ask for your help in doing that, because that would be really helpful, because, you know, we want to make sure that we're reaching all of the schools and getting every kid's feedback.
Kim, you've worked closely with Angelita and Sabina. Do you think it might be possible, to Jen's question and Sabina's answer, to enroll Jay Nichols from the Vermont Principals Association and/or the Superintendent's Association, Jeff Francis? I leave that to your good judgment.
Yes, I actually think that's a terrific idea. That was actually part of why I was raising my hand. And the other, I think if we are able to, maybe through Jeff Francis or Jay Nichols at ZPA and VSA, give these schools a heads up that this is coming and that you're working with a professor to develop the questions, they would be able to get that out, maybe through newsletters or however they do it, to their principals. And I think all principals and schools would be really interested in that information and feedback. So I think you guys had done it before, that you provided the results back to the schools through your contacts, I think, if I'm remembering from the first survey. It just is really good information, and I think they'd be really enthusiastic about it. The sort of, not really save the date, but that same concept, that it's coming and you're working on it, allows them to know that that's happening and be looking forward to it and, you know, get the best response you possibly can and maybe let them know you were helping for middle and high school. But I'm happy to support you guys in that anyway, we can, and I am really looking forward to it. I think it's critically important. Thank you for your work on it.
Kim, I think if you were to approach Jeff and Jay, they would furnish you with the email lists, so that would facilitate communication for Angelita and Sabina with these individuals. And Peter, you had a further comment?
Well, yes, John, thank you. John and I have discussed pursuing this further in the next months. It'll be on the agenda to really look at basically how the students doing. And we're going to hopefully get a group of people into give us a closer perspective on that issue. Thank you.
Peter, I just emailed you the PDF of our, like, presentation. So it basically just has the graphs that Angelita and I presented and should be a good kind of overview of the data.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
This has been a great discussion, and I'd be happy to come back to some of the topics if time permits, but we're a little bit past schedule to receive public comment. Suzanne, do we have anybody online looking to make public comment?
John, there are people online, but I am uncertain if any wish to be heard.
All right. Well, let us just say to those who are online with us, now is a good time for public comment on any topic that is on our agenda. There will be another period for public comment at 2:00 PM, an extended period for public comment, further public comment about rules 1300 and 2360. You're welcome to speak about them now and any other topic on our agenda. No indication, Suzanne, that anybody wishes to step forward and be heard?
Correct.
That is correct. Okay, thank you. Then let us go on to the chair's report. The chair's report is mercifully brief. There's been a lot of sort of stuff in the air, but it's what I think some of you are also seeing in your emails, comments of concern from parents about their children who are not in school at all or not in school full-time. And some of the concern comes from children with special needs or special situations or at tech school. I thought a very credible concern was expressed by how do you effectively teach many of the elements of technical education remotely? It is, to some degree, a hands-on form of learning, and there were concerns about that. Another totally unrelated topic, there is the possibility of an appeal of a local school board decision with regard to tuitions to a religiously affiliated school. The possibility is out there. We've been notified of that as a possibility, which will present some very interesting challenges should it arise. And the Office of the State Auditor has undertaken an analysis of the laws and regulations as they apply to public schools and as they apply to independent schools. And there's a draft in circulation about that, and I believe the auditor's office will produce a final report sometime in the future, which will be of interest, of course, since the State Board is the entity that writes the rules regarding independent schools as well as public schools. So I foresee some of these topics bubbling to the surface in the next several months as well. Of course, the legislature will be reconvening in January. We can talk about legislative agenda a little bit later in the meeting. And so that's all from the chair. Mr. Secretary, would you like to speak?
Yes, good morning. It's good to see you all. I'd just like to acknowledge Sabina and Angelita and their performance during the press conference Governor hosted. Did a great job and you guys, very well spoken. So I really appreciate your participation in that. You shared your message very effectively. I thought I'd provide some updates on our work since our last meeting. Firstly, we've been working on deploying what we call surveillance testing for COVID-19 in our schools, basically using school staff as a proxy for the understanding, the broader rates of virus spread in our communities. That's been going very well. The week before Thanksgiving, we endeavored to test every school in the state, and that worked out pretty well. It was pretty complex logistical undertaking involving the National Guard and so forth, and we saw approximately a 40% participation rate in that testing. And the results, you know, yielded a very low positivity rating, somewhere under 0.3%. So that went very well. And now, through the month of December, we're extending that testing out by testing 25% of our schools each week through the month of December, and we'll be continuing that after the first of the year as well. So it's part of our strategy to sort of monitor the larger trends, and that's in the context, I think, for the month of November. You know, the rates of the virus have increased significantly in our region and to a certain extent in Vermont. And that's led us to develop, let's say, targeted approaches. The Governor issued an addendum prohibiting household social gatherings. We followed up with guidance to schools and how to implement that. Basically, schools have been required to implement a daily health check questionnaire every day, and our guidance allows them to ask a question about participation in multi-household social gatherings. So, you know, all in all, you know, post-Thanksgiving, we're pretty close to understanding the impact of Thanksgiving in our data. And it looks like, you know, Vermont is not going to see a spike as a result of the holiday in its data. We still have a couple more days to go to sort of confirm that that's the trend, but we're sort of cautiously optimistic that Thanksgiving holiday, at any rate, hasn't had a significant negative impact on our rates of contagion. We are, you know, equally concerned about the winter holidays, including Christmas, that are before us. So we're evaluating our approach coming forward in the next couple of weeks, but I think it's fair to say we're in a period of concern around holidays and we're just going to have to do our best to get through this period. Increasingly, I think we're optimistic about after the first of the year and where we go from there. Certainly, the availability of the vaccine is informing our perspective in that regard. But we're having a lot of discussions right now, as you can imagine, around vaccination, deployment and so forth, and that's part of a national concern. We are expecting the Moderna vaccine to be considered this week by the FDA. So exciting time, to a certain extent, and to a certain extent, but we've been working towards this moment. And I think coming out the other end of this and after the holidays, we'll be focused on really considering when we can start to return to more in-person instruction. on really considering when we can start to return to more in-person instruction. And because right now, that's our best intervention for students and their families. In terms of other issues, I was just going to mention the Tax Commissioner's letter. The Tax Commissioner is required to put out a letter, essentially a forecast of education spending and potential tax, property tax increases by, on December 1st. That letter went out forecasting a 9% increase. I think it's fair to say there's three items that are causing that potential increase. And I would should say, before I talk about the three items, it's important to acknowledge that the legislature excluded from that analysis the issue of a deficit in the Education Fund, which still remains somewhere around 40 to 60 million, depending on how you look at it. So that was excluded from the analysis. But basically, the three areas that are causing an increase, one is we're projecting an increase of education spending right now, about 3.8%. There were additional costs related to teacher retirement around the same percentage, and also just drops in revenue, particularly in the non-residential and the business side. So those three items, I think, more or less contribute equally to the increase, but just sort of good indicators of, you know, to what extent COVID and sort of pre-COVID inefficiency or so forth is contributing to our cost issues. Lastly, just the issue the chair had mentioned, they have some conversation with Dr. Mathis on assessment. And we'll speak mostly about the required assessments. This is S-Back or the Smarter Balance Assessment. So this issue's been heating up, certainly before the presidential election, was my observation. There was a lot of conversation, and we were interested in that as well. For the most part, we deferred conversation with our national partners on that until after the presidential election, and now that conversation has heated up more. But basically, at the national level, when I say the national level, I mean among the chiefs, we call it Council of Chief State School Officers, our national association. There's basically two themes to that sort of debate, if you will. One is, on the one hand, the data is incredibly valuable to identify equity issues. On the other hand, just the practical implications of how do we administer these assessments when they are, to the most extent, requiring in-person instructions? How do we actually do this? And I think a related piece to that concern is around the validity of the data relative to accountability systems that are also sort of required. So that's sort of the debate among school chiefs nationally right now. I do see some states sort of moving forward unilaterally, but to a certain extent, our actions are bound by what the federal government will require, and there hasn't been any change from the U.S. Department of Education on the requirements. So right now, we're moving forward with planning to do the tests. We have to make some decisions now just to do the logistics involved. So we're moving forward as planned, but we've notified districts that that shouldn't be interpreted, that that means the tests are actually going to happen, because there's still, you know, there's a lot going on politically on this issue. And once again, the practical element, it's hard for us to predict what the conditions for the virus will be next month, let alone in the spring when the assessments are generally given. So I'll end my report there and would welcome any questions on any issues I discussed or other issues.
Board members, do you have comments or questions?
Peter here. I do. In regards to your data collection, and particularly in reference to elementary schools, when there are, at least in my area around Orleans Southwest, there are a lot of elementary students that are not attending school at all. And that puts a tremendous amount of pressure on the parents to be in the pivotal position of coordinating education on the home front. How do you get a handle on that and what's going on? And the other sidebar issue is association, socialization issue relative to kids not being, I know my grandson is a disturbance, but he's not interacting with any other kids. I was kind of curious what your read is on that front. Thank you.
Yeah, and I think when you say school, kids aren't attending, I'd say they're, firstly, I think we're talking about participating, because we have remote, students can be attending school in a remote disposition. But as you know, we've had, we do a monthly data collection on to what extent districts are in remote, in-person, or the combination to hybrid learning. And I think it's been fairly consistent. We're just sort of unpacking the data from the November survey. It's been fairly consistent to say that school districts in Vermont, somewhere around 80% of them are in some sort of hybrid disposition, and that would include all the schools in their district. So certainly, there's been, we saw with the end of October, almost a doubling amount of the in-person instruction at the primary level. But the high school in particular tends to still be in a hybrid mode and more remote learning going on. So we have, you know, the issue of attendance, students are able to attend school in remote disposition. But I think Peter's question, my interpretation of it is like, so, you know, what about this hybrid and to what extent students are engaged and so forth? And I think it is pause for concern. It's one we've highlighted. And as we move through the holiday period, it certainly was our hope to bring more attention and effort to addressing these concerns prior to the holidays. But as the case counts increased, we realized pretty quickly that job one has to be just the continued safe operation of our schools in the face of pretty significant case increases of the virus in the region and in Vermont. But we are planning on sort of pivoting sometime after the first of the year to point the systems toward, to begin to start to address the impact of the emergency on students. And I think many of the issues Peter raises are ones that we're keenly interested in intervening on. But it does require certain conditions in the virus in our communities. Basically, we need to be able to return to more in-person instruction in order to even begin to assess the impact of the emergency on students and their families. So we're hoping to start to make that turn sometime after the first of the year, but we decided before Thanksgiving that it was not going to be possible due to the conditions of the virus that we're in right now, arguably some of the most challenging conditions that we've seen since last spring.
Other comments or questions? Bill, do you wish to speak on this topic?
Not really. I think that Dan has given a good overview of things. I just wonder what the new administration is going to be saying as regards testing.
We don't know.
Yeah, the other point I'd make on that, I sort of pointed to two variables that were, I sort of generalized, were being debated among school chiefs nationally. I think there's a third element to that concern, which was COVID relief. So we're also negotiating a pretty, as you know, a pretty dynamic political environment where we need to secure additional federal funding. So the work I just alluded to, sort of the next phase or this pivot in our recovery of the emergency is going to require significant federal dollars, more so potentially than was needed to reopen schools. So, you know, we're going to have a need for additional services and so forth. And a lot of the political debate at the moment, unfortunately, around assessment was being connected to the debate around funding, meaning opponents of additional funding to schools were making the connection with testing, saying, well, look, states don't want to test, therefore, why should we send them more money? So there's been a prioritization first on, you know, just in terms of the political debate, to resolve the funding issue first. And then, as you might be aware, a new U.S. Secretary of Education has not been announced yet. So the priority right now is to get the funding COVID relief bill done, so we're working to do that. But the second piece will be to start to get into some of the policy issues, including assessment.
Thank you. Jenna, and then Jennifer.
Hi, Dan. I was wondering, could we maybe in January, as a board, get that information, kind of a statewide snapshot of where schools are at from you? And we could kind of see a little bit around who's remote, who's not remote, what kind of hybrid is happening? Because it's hard to get a good picture. Like, I know what's happening in my area, but I'm not sure statewide.
We have a map on our website that's updated once a month, so you can go on our website right now and see the data. But yeah, we have, you know, it's not real time, so it's designed to give us some insight into the broader patterns. But it's also important to acknowledge that this was a strategy to collect that data on a monthly basis, basically to monitor the reopening period. And it's important to acknowledge that we're about to change into another phase of this recovery where there'll be more emphasis on in-person as vaccination rolls out and so forth.
Thanks. And I guess my second thing is to really recommend that the department thinks about as we balance mental health issues for kids and social isolation and everything with the S-Backs. As a parent, my son has now spent two days prepping for the S-Back already, because they're not going back in our town until two weeks after. They're going back remote. So, I mean, they're not going back in person, so just remote. So I think maybe there's some thought around educators that they need to prepare kids now, when we're in mid-December, for a test that may happen, which is causing an incredible amount of stress for my 13-year-old, so.
Yeah. No, I mean, it's fair to say there's a lot of stress for everyone right now, and certainly teachers are feeling the stress. Teachers are exhausted. Schools are, the parents are tired, and the kids certainly are very anxious. But on the other hand, you know, we have to, and no state in my knowledge has quite figured out how to proceed in this regard. At some point, we do need to assess the impact of the emergency on students and kids in the system. So when I say assess, I'm using the term broadly. We need to understand what we have in front of us in order to focus our resources, and those resources are not just education resources. These are going to be broader social service resources that need to be deployed. So we need to understand what we're dealing with in terms of the impact of the emergency. And I would guess that the impact of the emergency is going to be long-lasting. Some students will bounce back, okay. Others are going to need support for some time. And, you know, those patterns aren't quite understood to us yet. I mean, are those needs going to be greater at the high school level versus the elementary level? We don't know. What does that start to mean from an academic or social, emotional standpoint? So all that points to us being able to understand things. And I would say right now, our biggest strategy to do that understanding or that assessment is to return to in-person, because we, just by standing up the regular in-person system, as you know, as we know it, begins to right the ship in a lot of ways, starts to reestablish those relationships, starts to get a sense of the levels of anxiety, the, you know, issues of truancy and engagement. So the first thing we need to do is get the in-person instruction deployed as much as we can. So that'll remain a priority, I would predict.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a note, Bill, please mute yourself. All board members should be muted unless they are speaking. And that also goes for guests who are on phone. Many of you are not muted, and we would appreciate it if you would be muted. Jennifer, and then Kim.
I'm going to speak.
Jennifer?
Dan, I just wanted to say, first of all, I'm sure that this past year has been an enormous amount of work and effort to put out many fires simultaneously, and they're all important. So thank you. I'm curious, as you're collecting data from the schools, if you're finding that the amount of curriculum that a teacher is able to teach in a class is suffering because of this hybrid model, you know, they're just not able to get through as much information as they would with all students in the class all the time? And what your thoughts are as far as rectifying that going forward? I don't know how you could, but I'm curious to know if you've given some thought about that.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's just a follow-up on my prior comment. It's, we don't know. I mean, we have a lot of anecdotal commentary, but I think it's also important to unpack your question across the K through 12 continuum. It's your question, I think, the idea of covering content holds up stronger for me in the upper elementary into the high school grades, where the content is often delivered in the form of a course. It's not such a strong correlation at the elementary grades, where, yes, there is content, but there's also skills development, you know, I'd say social, emotional development. Classes are, or school is organized on classes as opposed to courses. So we need to understand those things. I think, you know, we've also been acknowledging, I think, that it's not so much that people have fallen behind. The whole system has been pushed behind. So it's not like you can say, here's where some students are versus others. I think it's fair to say the whole system has been more or less put on pause, and I'm sure we're going to find places in the state that have made great progress and have been able to sort of keep their head above water. And there's going to be places where kids have really fallen behind, both from a content perspective and from a development perspective. So I think we're going to find all of that. And I think we're also going to find that kids probably bounce back pretty quick, and we'll find ways to remediate that. And some kids aren't going to bounce back pretty quick. So, you know, I think it's going to be a bit of everything. That's why, again, I think it's a complex situation. And in spite of all that complexity, before we sort of think about targeted interventions, our number-one intervention on the table is just to restore the system as we knew it, to begin its natural work of, you know, getting those students in class, having those relationships percolate out, having teachers just through their professional daily activity of beginning to assess in a formative way where students are at and starting to make some of those curriculum decisions at the district level. So we definitely have some work to do to conceptualize how to move forward and to point districts to begin to be attentive to these issues. And that's kind of what we're working on strategically now. But I think, once again, after the first of the year, we'll start to try to push forward in this area and have districts engage in some planning to do that. But it is predicated on the conditions of the virus sort of improving in our community so we can get back to more in-person.
Thank you. Kim?
Dan, actually, that was, I think, directly to the question I was going to ask, is where or what or how, in the absence of S-Back? Let's just presume that even the efficacy of the data on that would be really, I think, challenging, to think that's going to inform instruction or anything. We do, and honestly, those results come back so late. I guess my personal bias, I don't see that being the way we're going to know how our kids are doing necessarily, particularly now. So I'm interested in hearing, and I think you may have just alluded to it, the ways the agency might be articulating the priorities for what and maybe best practice for how to get at how students are doing on essential standards, so that there would be some capturing? And what kind of technical support is the agency able to provide to districts in doing that work? I just, it sounds like that's the work you'll all be doing in January. I just didn't know. Obviously, you know, the sooner districts know this, the better, so that they can find their ways to provide you, all of us, feedback on how students are doing.
Yeah, what we're planning, we're working internally in the agency to conceptualize that work, and we have an advisor. I meet weekly with superintendents, and I have an advisory group comprised of most of the education associations in the state. What we've been messaging to them is that we, inside the agency, I think we have a responsibility to start to do that conceptualization, so we're doing that. We tried, again, to do that in October, but then, once again, the conditions of the virus just said, no, we got to put all that work on hold. But we're working on sort of framing of that, and then we'll intend to share that with our stakeholder groups after the first of the year. So it's, to a certain extent, we're not waiting, you know, we're doing the conceptualization of that now in anticipation of what I'll call a recovery phase, which is really, once again, now really based on a certain amount of the vaccine being deployed. So sometime right after the first of the year, we'll be engaging with stakeholder groups to sort of conceptualize what the required activities would be, or how to point the system, if you will, towards this recovery, with the hope that we'll actually start to make that transition, I would say, sometime after, I would say, Martin Luther King Day or towards the end of January. So we have some planning work to do. We also know that there's a couple, what I'll call incubation periods, related to the holidays, that we want to make sure, you know, basically, a couple weeks after the first of the year is when we'll understand to what extent the holiday gatherings and so forth have contributed to a trajectory in our contagion pattern. So that, it all sort of comes together. We have some planning to do while we're waiting to get a sense of that trajectory, and we'll be able to sort of point. And meanwhile, the vaccine's coming online. So sometime towards the end of January, beginning of February, we'll start to, you know, have some sense of where we're going in that work.
Thank you. Thank you. And Sabina, you have a comment, a question?
Yeah, I think this was just something that came to mind while listening to the discussion, was that, like, for me, for next semester, I'm taking AP Chem, and new this year, we basically have two blocks allotted to that class, so I'll be taking it for, I think, what, we have like 70-minute blocks, so I'll be in that classroom for over two hours, you know, two days a week, and, you know, the likelihood of us actually going back fully in person, especially at a large school like CBU, where you have like 20 kids in a classroom that, you know, logically will fit 15, you know, and having such a rigorous course like that, five days a week for, you know, over two hours a day, is something, I think, more at the high school level, where our schedules have been changed, where we've completely changed the fact that we go from alternating days to now a four-by-four schedule. At the elementary level and middle school level, I don't think they've made the changes that we have, but that's just something that kind of came to mind, and I thought I'd, you know, put that out there for people to think about.
Yeah, it's, I mean, there's, you know, once again, I think it's important to say we're optimistic about how the next semester unfolds, but it's, there's a lot of uncertainty, obviously, you know. I was also going to mention, just on a related note in my report, we've been running an orientation, let's say, we, all the agencies, the state government have been running an orientation sessions for new legislators. We ran one yesterday for the Agency of Education, and it was fairly well-attended. We're going to post that session up on our video sort of storing site, sort of like our own internal YouTube, so I can share that out. But we did have a new rep email the governor's office and express interest in getting a presentation from the state board, so I'll share that information with the chair. If that's something you'd like to do, basically organize an orientation for new legislators on the work of the state board, we're happy to help organize, you know, do the scheduling for you to do that, but I'll share that information with the chair.
Thank you. Kim, your hand is still up, you might take it down if you don't have a question.
Sorry.
Take your hand down, please. Bill, you have your hand up.
Yes. Given that the cumulative data that we see is going to be all over the place, I'm trying to think of ways in which we can get something out of this that might be worthwhile. Do you see that maybe we could do some disaggregation of the data at the, when we get it, to see how this has affected equity, whether the distributions have grown flatter, meaning more diverse, things like that? I'm wondering, that's one question. And did the waiting study, has it just been submerged amidst all this other stuff, or is it showing some signs of life?
Yeah, I think your question, Bill, around disaggregation points to why, you know, we need to have some data at some point, so it's not as simple as saying we shouldn't be testing kids. I think that there's a strong argument to say we shouldn't test based on the accountability frameworks that exist in many states that have been largely punitive to schools, but on the other hand, we need data. So I think one of the strategies we've employed is, you know, we've extended our partnership with Metometrics, which is the Lexile Quantile Score activity, so we continue to do that. We were contemplating doing that last year before COVID, we did decide to go forward with that. So what that allows us to do, basically, is if districts are using other commercial benchmark assessments, it allows us to provide a common way to translate that data, so we'll be able to potentially see some patterns that you described through other means, not just S-Back. But I think your comment just underscores the importance of, you know, getting some assessment and valid assessment implemented at some point this spring. And I will say, you know, I think you folks know the NAEP assessment was postponed, so that's, the NAEP is our only assessment that's nationally been consistently deployed in every state, so we won't have NAEP data to take a look at. And we were starting to see some correlation, I think, a strong relationship between trends in our NAEP data and S-Back relative to opportunity and equity. In terms of the waiting study, I have heard from several legislators that they're very interested in advancing it this session, so I wouldn't say it's been submerged, but there's a lot of conversation going around right now on legislative priorities, and I know the board's having that conversation today as well. But I think there's a lot of interest in a waiting study. I met with Dr. Colby yesterday, actually, I think, or the day before, I guess it was yesterday. So, you know, just to touch base, and she's still getting a lot of questions from legislators to explain the waiting study and so forth, so that, to me, that means there's a lot of interest in bringing it back up. I'm not sure the solutions have been put on the table. I have seen one draft, Bill, but I think there's still a lot of interest in the topic.
Very good.
The question is, is it going to be redistribution of existing resources, or would they go with what the waiting study actually showed that was needed, or do we know that yet?
You don't know that.
We don't know that. I mean, that's where the solutions come into play. I mean, there's proposed, I've seen one proposed bill, but I don't, it's not clear to me yet what direction the General Assembly will take on this issue.
Very good. I think we need to leave it there. Just a reminder to board members, I did not give you my usual admonition at the beginning, but please do remember that you are on national television. So conversations with people in the room with you, looking at other things, other screens, do your very best, please, to act and behave and present yourself as if you are in a physical meeting, because you are being seen as that by Vermonters who tune in, and to the extent that we appear to be looking at screens or other distractions, to that extent, we don't convey the message that I think the board wants to convey, that it is paying close attention to Vermont's educational issues and concerns, and that each member is engaged in doing so. So let us all just remember that you're on TV. Thank you. So the next topic, and we're right on schedule for it, is to discuss the state, the board's budget for fiscal '22. Fiscal '22 seems like a long way away, just because of the way fiscal years are denominated. Fiscal '22 begins on 1 July in 2021, that is next July. So it ends in 2022, that's why it's called 2022. So what I have prepared for you is a proposed budget based largely upon recent year budgets. So you've received in your packet or online a one-page budget that compares what the fiscal 2021 budget, our present year budget, is, and you'll recall that that was reduced by about $10,000 on our part, at the request of the governor, that each agency of state government reduce its budget. The governor's recommendation was 3%, and we on the board were more progressive by that, and we reduced our budget by about 9% because we were able to eliminate so much travel, and travel is a big part of the state budget historically. But because all of our meetings are virtual, and none of us are traveling to our board meetings or committee meetings, we were able to shave $10,000 off our budget. So our budget originally had been about $82,000 or $3,000, we reduced it to $70,000. And thinking ahead to fiscal 2022, that is to say, the 12 months that begins in July of next year, 2021, and goes until July of the year after, 2022, it seems to me that it's fairly likely that, to some extent, things will return to enough normal that in-person meetings would resume. Probably not by the midsummer, according to Dr. Fauci, it's more likely the autumn before things start to look like, the autumn of 2021, before things start to look normal, even with the vaccines where they're available. But certainly, by this time next year, there's reasonable prospect that we may be able to go back to in-person meetings, which we probably will want to be able to do. So I pulled the budget back up to essentially the same level as we had first proposed it for the present year, $82,000. And that's what you see. Just by way of comparison to other years, in fiscal '19, we spent, our actual spend was $91,000. That was largely driven by all our work on Act 46, which was very intense. In the most recent fiscal year, fiscal '20, ended in, ended on 30 June of this year, we spent only $32,000, quite a remarkable year. We eliminated our funding for NASB, and that saved us $20,000 and several other things. So in any case, the recommendation to you is that we adopt and propose to the agency a budget of $82,000. The secretary has indicated that he would expect to incorporate our recommendation into the agency's budget, which is customary, which would then be presented to the general, to the governor. The governor's office may make changes, and then finally, the agency, the secretary makes a presentation to the General Assembly in mid-January, late January, for the agency's budget, including, as does the state board's budget. So comments or questions? I see Bill Mathis, you have your hand up.
Yes. This raises the question of the staffing for the State Board of Education, and we've been asking for that for some long time, but it's not in the budget, and I'm just wondering if we ought to put that into the budget, to at least put the marker down. Whether it's going to be successful or not's another matter, but I think that maybe we need to be consistent with the annual report, which we're talking about a little bit later, which talks about this issue.
Thank you, Bill. Are there other comments?
Yes, I have a question. Peter here, that's in regards to attorney fees. That's often something that can catch us, and what's your, when you're looking at the next upcoming year relative to issues that might need attorneys' help? Have you any thoughts on that?
This year, for the first time, we have created a line item for legal and advisory services, and we've dedicated in the current fiscal year $20,000 for that, basically taking the monies that we used to spend on NASB and reallocating them for legal and advisory services. You're right, Peter, for example, in 2019, when we were working on Act 46, we spent tens of thousands of dollars on legal services, and we have already done so again this current year, and we can expect to do so further. So for the proposed budget, I budgeted $24,000 for legal and advisory services. By advisory services, I would just mention, for example, there is the possibility that the General Assembly will resuscitate the capital construction, school construction program. The rulemaking for that falls to the board, and it's quite complicated, and it's very possible that we may need to retain engineering services to advise us on some of the rules and parameters that the board is responsible for in connection with school construction. So it, we, I think the $24,000 could easily be spent between legal and advisory services. So yes, the answer to your question is, we are anticipating such expenses and budgeting for them. I see Oliver, you have your hand up.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Wonderful. So yeah, I just, I want to respond to Dr. Mathis's suggestion that we include a request for staffing. I just really don't think the next fiscal year is the year to ask for that, given just the, you know, the overall financial health of the state, you know, given that this has been a recurring request in years where the state's fiscal health was in better shape, and the board had, I'm thinking back to Act 46, had considerable work before it, and, you know, the board was not met with success. I just don't think that this is, it's really a wise thing to present that to the legislature. I do think we should get creative and entertain some conversation with the agency about, you know, perhaps a shared, an arrangement where there's a shared resource, and I'm thinking perhaps a staff attorney who could be designated as sort of the legal counsel for the board, and wouldn't be subject to sort of the conflicts that, you know, we have to deal with from time to time, who could support us on, you know, the various matters that come before the board where we do need legal counsel, but I just don't think it's a full-time job. And, you know, we should, particularly in these times, we should be really judicious about requests of taxpayer funds.
Are there other comments?
I understand what Oliver is saying there, and I have to agree with it, but I'm wondering if we, if we don't start asking for it, then it's not going to happen. And I'm thinking, maybe, I like the idea of alternate arrangements, but I'd like to hear what Dan has to say about that, as well as...
Bill, we just lost you. Say it again.
Okay, I'd like to hear what Dan has to say about the sharing of resources and where we can go from there.
Thank you, Bill. Dan, would you like to respond?
I'd have to think about that. I think what I was thinking, the logic behind Oliver's suggestion was something about addressing the conflict of interest issue. I'm not sure to what extent just dedicating someone who's still an employee of our agency would resolve that, but it's an interesting idea.
Yeah, it's a good question. Just to clarify for you, there are a number of cases where the board has to make a ruling on an action of the agency. This is in our quasi-judicial capacity, and so an attorney of the agency cannot advise us, because the agency is sort of not exactly a defendant in the matter, but is a party to the matter. So this is what Dan is getting at, is how would one individual who's an employee of the agency serve in a capacity where they are, their loyalties are with the board? That's why we retain an outside counsel, because we need an attorney who is answerable only to the board and not to the agency. So it's a complicated question, it's a nice idea. There are some other staffing functions which very possibly could be addressed. I think the way that we will have success with this, and this situation has existed since 2012, when Act 98 was implemented, and at that time, the state board was no longer part of the Agency of Education. Until 2012, the state... Until 2012, the state board ran the Department of Education. They were the board of directors of the Department of Education. They hired and fired the commissioner of education. Act 98 of 2012 eliminated all of that and left behind this language that says, "And the board shall have staff who shall report to the board." Made no provision financially for that and just made this, made that nice statement, which has gone ignored now since the year 2012. The various boards, my predecessor chairs have made various attempts to do exactly what Bill is suggesting, put it in the budget, go to the appropriations committee, so on and so forth. None of those have been successful. But I think bears more promise, if at all, is to have conversations with the committees of, of interest, i.e. the two committees on education, House and Senate, in which they become enrolled in the, in the board's need for its own staff. And that, those, some of those conversations began to happen, in fact, this past spring, as I worked with both committees on the legislation to reform the state board. But none of them show immediate prospect of bearing fruit. But I, I think that that's probably the way that we're going to have, have success. But as Oliver says, in these very, very straitened financial times, proposing new spending seems like a non-starter.
So...
Go ahead, Oliver.
Sure, yeah, if I could just expand a little bit on, on my, my thinking. You know, I, I think two examples where there are hearing officers at the tax department who are employees of the tax department, and they, they actually heal, hear, you know, tax appeals. And I think some attorneys, and it's always been very confusing to me, are actually employees, some attorneys, staff attorneys for various agencies are actually employees of the Attorney General's Office, but they're sort of assigned. So I, I just, you know, and my thinking is that, you know, there, there are several attorneys in the agency right now, and if you sort of, you know, put some guardrails around that person's duties so that when they're working for the agency, they're, they're not involved in anything where the agency could become a party to a case before the state board, you know, they could be handling more sort of routine, general administrative law issues. And then, you know, the other, let's say 50% or whatever they're sort of allocated to support the state board is, you know, is intended to advise the board where it needs independent counsel. I just, I don't know, I, I, I think because, you know, there is a construct where there are actually hearing officers within agencies who are, you know, sort of acting as neutral arbiters, I, I think there's some precedent there.
Sure, that's a good point. And, and I'm perfectly willing to pursue that. I think we ought to staff that out a little bit and then maybe have a conversation with, with Dan to see what his thoughts might be. Just to note, I do believe that one of the attorneys at the agency is still currently an employee of the Attorney General's Office. At least Rachel Smith was, and earlier Emily Simmons started as an employee from the Attorney General's Office, for what it's worth. Let us, let us agree to take that up further. Maybe Oliver, you can do some research on that and come back to us with some ideas about how we might approach this in a conversation with the agency. Would you be willing to...
Dan, would you be, yeah, Dan, would you be amenable to having an offline conversation to explore that further?
Sure.
Thank you. So now...
I'd like to add one other thing on this, is that...
Bill, just to remind you, Bill, you need to get the chair's attention placed as a rule. Go ahead.
Fair enough. We've talked about quasi-judicial matters and legal kinds of things, which would, which fall under our purview, but we haven't really talked any about educational issues, such as the evaluation of schools, teacher preparation, revising rules and things of this sort, which are not legal, but still will take a lot of time. And if we're going to be a policymaking group, we'll have to address that in some kind of fashion. And I say that recognizing all the financial troubles that we face as a state.
Thank you, Bill. So now, Board, it would be useful if we were to vote on recommending this budget to the Agency of Education. So would anybody make a motion to that effect? Jen, you're smiling, are you prepared to?
I will, I will move that we vote on the budget.
It's been moved that we recommend the state fiscal year 22, 2022 budget of $82,000 to the agency for incorporation in its budget for that fiscal year. Is there a second?
I'll second that, this is Oliver Olson.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there further discussion? Are you ready then for the question? Therefore, the question is, shall the board vote to recommend to the Agency of Education a budget for the board for fiscal year 2022 in the amount of $82,000? Suzanne, will you take the roll, please? Call the roll, please.
Yes, I will. Chair Carol, will you be voting?
Yes, at the end.
Okay. Sabina Broshu?
Aye.
Kim Gleason? Bill Mathis?
Aye.
Oliver Olson?
Yes.
Peter Peltz?
Aye.
Jennifer Samuelson?
Aye.
Jenna O'Farrell?
Aye.
And Chair Carol?
Aye. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it. You have adopted the motion, and the recommendation is and will be made to the Secretary of Education for inclusion of this budget amount in the agency's budget for 2022. We are on schedule to take a break, and we'd like to return at... Good. Thank you all for getting back. I think I have an apology to make. Suzanne told me at the break that I was not visible on video, and even though I was visible to myself, but apparently not to you, so mea culpa, mea culpa. What's, as my sainted grandmother used to say, what's sauce for the goose is sauce for the gander. I should have, for some reason, my image was not visible. Not that it's any great delight, but I hope I'm there now. So our, our topic here is, we have, we have two topics related to special ed. At, at 11 o'clock, we will hear from Kim Gleason and her committee on their work on the 132360 rules. But let me just set the context a little here about the 2200, so-called 2200 rules. I'm going to first of all refer to it as 2220, because rules here is 2200 includes a whole bunch of other institutions: prison, education, private kindergartens, post-secondary education, and independent schools. The only part of the rule, Rule 2200 that relates to independent schools is 2220. And so we, I, I would encourage us to be thinking about 2220, because we're not talking about kindergartens, we're not talking about post-secondary education, we're focusing only on independent schools. Anyway, Act 173 mandates that there be changes to Rule 2200. They call it 2200 as it pertains to independent schools, i.e. 2220, with regard to special education. And the advisory committee will be making, and together with the Agency of Education, will be making recommendations to us for the changes in rules that have been quite clearly specified in Act 173. As you know, when you open a rule, then it's open. That is to say, when you start changing a rule, you, the tradition anyway, I don't think this is written in stone anywhere, the tradition is that other changes also can be made. So General Assembly has directed us to open Rule 2220, to make these changes. And as we have heard in our work on 132360, we've opened them to implement changes to Act 173. And other changes have been proposed and we, and are under consideration, which is what Kim's committee is going to speak to us about. So similarly, it occurs to us that maybe there are other changes to Rule 2200 that ought to be given thought to at this time, even though they may not relate in any way to special education in Act 173. And so at our last meeting, we talked about the idea of creating a committee somewhat in parallel to the special committee we've created for 132360, a special committee on 2220, to look at changes other than those required by Act 173. Because, and Dan, I hope you'll correct me if I'm wrong on this, our, our understanding is that all of Act 173's directives about rule changes at 132360 and 2200 are being addressed jointly by the agency together with the advisory group. Is that correct? Yep. So what I want to ask you today is to authorize the chair to appoint a committee to look at other 2220 rules that ought to be considered for change and to propose those changes. I have already asked three members of the board if they would be willing to serve on this committee. But their, their service depends upon a vote by this board to create the committee. Let's just go ahead and I would welcome a motion to direct the chair to create a committee to examine possible rule changes for Rule 2220 and to appoint three board members for that purpose. But anyone care to make that motion?
So moved, Kim?
It's been moved by Kim. Is there a second? Jennifer, you're lit up, do you want a second?
I will second.
Thank you. So it's been moved and seconded that the board directs the chair to create and appoint a special committee of the board, three members, to examine the need for additional changes to Rule 2200 and to propose the same. Is there discussion? Very none, then we will vote. Will you please, Kim, did you want to say something? Yes.
I, I'm sorry, everything's very slow here, but I was just gonna sort of reflect on the notion that the rules being open allows us the opportunity to update, as we had that long list of the last time rules had been looked at or addressed, and we were gonna consider parsing that out and looking at where updates were necessary. So I think as much as it may be not directly linked to 173, these areas where we're opening them, I think are an opportunity to bring our rules into current time.
That's right. Yes. That, that certainly aligns with the conversation we had with Emily Simmons, you'll recall, where she brought us up to date on how old many of the board's rules are. I mean, there, we have tons of rules that refer to Secretary French as the commissioner. Well, that, if you do an archaeological dig, you'll find that that last time that word was properly used was 12 years ago. No, not 12, 10 years ago. So are you ready for the question then? Question then before you is, shall the board direct the chair to create a special committee of three members of the board to examine the poss, the need for changes to Rule 2200 in addition to those being undertaken in connection with Act 173? Suzanne, will you read, call the roll, please?
Yes, I will. Okay.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Bill.
Oliver Olson?
Yes.
Peter Peltz? Jennifer Samuelson?
Aye.
Jenna O'Farrell?
Aye.
Chair Carol, will you be voting?
Yes, and my vote is aye. Sabina is absent for the moment.
Yes.
Thank you. And so clearly your vote is unanimous, and thank you for that. Let me, let me just speak a little bit further about what's, what's at issue here. Act 173 changed the due date for rule changes for Act 2200, for Rule 2200, and says that by the 30th of June of this year, we must initiate rulemaking. Now, initiate rulemaking is a term of art that refers specifically to the board adopting a proposed rule and beginning the APA process. The, and so that's kind of the formal process for rulemaking. Everything up to that, actually the most important stuff, all the hard work, goes on for anywhere from two to 10 to 12 months beforehand. For example, you all recall on 132360, we started work on that in 2019. That is to say, the advisory group started work, and so did the agency. And in, from 2019 well into 2020, all of that development work for those rules took place. And then I think it was in March of 2020 that we, the board, finally were satisfied with the rules that were developed and adopted them as our proposed rules. And in April, we began the APA process. APA stands for Administrative Procedures Act, specified by the General Assembly. So we're now in the same place with regard to Rule 2220. By the way, just to keep context real clear for you, the APA process receives our proposed rule, submits it to public comment, and when you have received a whole bunch of comment, you then may revise your proposed rule. And you, you may add to it, you may change it. And then when you've completed those revisions, you submit those to the Legislative Committee on Administrative Rules and the Secretary of State. And unless there are objections from the Legislative Committee, they become the rule. So with regard to 132360, we are in the state of just about finishing the public comment period in another 13 days, 12 days. That public comment period will come to an end, and our committee of Angelita and Bill and Kim and Jenna will come to us in January with recommendations for any changes that they suggest to the, to the rule as it has been proposed. they suggest to the rule as it has been proposed. I hope that helps clarify where we are with 132360. Meanwhile, work on 2200 is going on. That is, the Advisory Group and the Agency are both working on a first draft of language for us. And we hope sometime in May, probably, to adopt a Board's version of its proposed rule and start the APA process for 2200. So, if this committee that you have just directed me to create wishes to make changes, and wishes to make changes in connection with the Board's current work on Rule 2200, it will be bound by that same schedule. And that schedule, as again, as I say, is stipulated by statute, that no later than 30 June, we must initiate rulemaking. Keep in mind, initiate rulemaking means formally adopt a proposed rule and submit it to the APA process. So that puts this committee on a fairly short timeline in order to sort of get on the train that's going down the tracks, as it were. That train is gonna leave the station by mid to late May, so that we don't miss the It's worth noting, though, that depending upon what this committee comes up with, if you come up with some very time-consuming, some substantial changes that are gonna take more time than can be developed, a proposed rule can be developed by May. And remember, you gotta develop it, run it past the Board, convince the Board, and then we gotta hear from, gotta hear from people. There's no formal comment period on it until later. You don't have a lot of time. You'd have to really get cracking. But it's worth noting that there is nothing to prevent the Board from opening an additional rulemaking undertaking with regard to 2220 at any time. So, this is to the committee in particular. You will need to decide early on what the scope of your work should be. And you may find that the scope of your work is so large that you can't get it all done in the next two or three months. It would be nice to ride the train that's going out of the station, but you can commission a new train. If, for example, you just can't get all your stuff together, or all of the changes together by April or May, including the language you propose, you can instead ask the Board to simply open a new rulemaking enterprise on 2220. We can open rules anytime we choose to, on the Board. So, we just need to, that's just sort of some context for the committee about its work. An example of a kind of thing that's out there that probably ought to have its rules up, our rules updated. In Act 173, the General Assembly, and this is 2018, not long ago, created special provisions in the event that a school, an independent school, appears to lack financial capacity. It granted the Board the authority to appoint a committee to visit the school and examine their books and their situation and make recommendations as to whether or not the schools either should make some changes or even be suspended. Some of you will remember that that's exactly what we did with the Compass School in Westminster, Vermont. The Compass School had failed to file their IRS forms for three years. The statute very clearly says, failure to file required forms is grounds for the State Board to be very concerned about a school's financial capacity. And in response, the Board created a visiting committee. It consisted of a couple Board members, a member of the Council of Independent Schools, and two representatives from the Department of Financial Regulation. And that team visited the school, had some very good meetings, and helped the school make some changes in their governance that allowed them to become a stronger school and to avoid any suspension action by the Board. That's all in law, but none of it's in our rules, and it needs to be. So that's an example of the kinds of things that this committee might come back to us with recommendations on. So, I will ask Kim Gleason and Jennifer Dexter Samuelson to serve along with Oliver Olson, who I will ask to chair this committee. And so, I hope the three of you have been kind of paying attention to these sort of time realities, these schedules. And my request of the three of you would be to survey the landscape of independent schools and the rules that pertain thereto, our existing rules, and identify and probably prioritize what are the rules that are most urgently in need of updating in 2220. Come back to this Board at our next meeting, our January meeting, with this list and lead a discussion with us about what you think ought to be the priorities, and also what you think you can do as part of the present rulemaking process, that is, the rulemaking process that's mandated by Act 173, and what you think can, would have to be done under a separate rulemaking enterprise because of scheduling constraints. Keep in mind that this committee is not addressing rulemaking changes in 2220 that are mandated by Act 173. For that, we're counting upon the Advisory Group and the Agency of Education kind of on a separate track to be coming, bringing those recommendations to us. I've just laid a lot of kind of inside baseball on you. Are there any questions or comments? Very good. Then...
I have a quick question. May I, Peter here?
Peter, yes, please.
We spend a lot of time with advocates, and I would, are the advocates pretty much in accord in regards to where we stand now in terms of, there was quite a lot of, you know, getting things settled between, amongst the interested groups?
Peter, are you speaking about the special ed?
Yes, all of that, yeah.
That's a good question, and I'd like to delay that until the next item.
Okay.
Because most of the advocates we've heard from have been in connection with 132360, which is the topic of Item I, which is to come up in a couple minutes. So, maybe you can pose that question at that time, please? Thank you. Kim, you have a comment or question?
I just wanted to clarify, I'm assuming as the changes related to 173 are offered by the Advisory Group and the Agency, that I would imagine as well, any technical corrections will come through that process versus us having the technical expertise to know where there may be technical corrections. That happened, as I'm recalling, with the 2360. There were some corrections in there that were technical in nature versus particular to 173.
Yeah, I think that's right. That should be how it works, that the stakeholder groups should be weighing in with the Advisory Group, and of course, they are, that's a group of lots of stakeholders, and any other stakeholders should be weighing in on the changes being made in response to Act 173. Other stuff that's not related to those changes, an illustration would be MTSS, that was not part of the Act 173 mandated changes, but that is coming to us now in this process. Other changes to Rule 2200 that don't bear to on 173 in any way, then ought to be, you and your committee probably ought to convene some public hearings to invite stakeholder comment on the, once you've laid out an agenda of, these are the three or four or five change areas that we contemplate doing, then I think you'll need to build a schedule that makes provision for stakeholder comment. Keep in mind, though, that once you start the APA process, there's still yet again the whole public comment period process. We, in other words, we have an informal comment period during the development of the proposal, and then, once the proposal goes into APA process, there's a formal comment period which we're still in with regard to 2360 and 1300.
Yeah. So, if we were to draw it parallel to what we're doing now, we are working parallel to, with, alongside the Advisory Group to come up, and the Agency, to come up with recommendations to the first draft that the Board would adopt to put into the public comment process, where the other committee that I'm chairing, we are taking feedback that was themed through the public comment process and offering recommendations to potential changes to the draft before it goes through the LCAR.
That is correct. Exactly correct. Yep.
Thank you.
Jennifer?
I'm wondering if you can explain, to the extent that the Agency would be drafting changes in the rules with regard to special education, that these rules dictate what the Board does, what oversight or comment do we have on the rules as they're being proposed by the Agency?
We have, the Board is the author of the rules. No rules are proposed into the LCAR process, except those rules which are adopted by the Board. So, we have a lot more than an opportunity to comment, we have an opportunity to write the rules. And so, the way this has worked in the case of 132360 was, the Board had some concerns about what the Agency was coming back to us with. We relied a great deal upon the Advisory Group, and we urged the Agency to make modifications in their recommended draft. And when we were satisfied with those modifications, so that they aligned with what the Board wanted, see, just have to remember, the Board has the ultimate authority and the only authority in writing these rules. The Agency essentially is staffing us, is making the recommendation of informed professionals, and we, of course, respect and take those into account. But in the end, it is the Board's own authority to write and adopt rules, and that's, so there will be the same authority and provision with regard to the 2200 rules that will be coming to us soon. I see, Oliver, you have your hand up?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I think you did a great job sort of outlining the process for this committee and how it should approach the rules. And I would echo your comments about sort of taking it, you know, if I can just play this back, essentially, I see the committee taking a two-phased approach. So the first phase is really working with key stakeholders to identify the quick wins, if you will, or Pareto's Law, you know, the 20% of potential, potential changes that will have, you know, 80% impact with the least amount of resistance or controversy. So things that, where we can pull stakeholders together, get their input, find consensus relatively easily, and then add those to the train that's already on the tracks. The goal being, we do not want to derail the 173 train, as it were, and any issues that we identify that, you know, might be a little bit more complex or potentially controversial, you know, we would, we would move those to a second phase.
Exactly. That's, I think is the right way to go about this. Peter, your hand is up. Do you have a question now, or is that from before?
I beg your pardon, my hand has been suspended in air for too long. Thank you.
Yeah. I remember we used to stand there like this to the teachers, waiting for her to recognize us. All right, then. Thank you all for that conversation and that shared, I think now, a shared understanding of how these things fit together. And now, I'd like us to move on to Item I, which is where a lot of really good stuff is happening. And we would like to, as you know, I is 132360, and a report from the committee and a discussion of where things stand. Madam Chair of the Committee, Kim, would you like to speak?
Yes, thank you. Let's try this with the video and see how we do. Unfortunately, the last meeting we had of this committee, my service in our house was terrible as well, but we muscled through. We'd met twice and took a look at the themes that had developed, where there had been significant public comments that varied from the draft that we had. And those three areas were Vermont's, way Vermont uses adverse effect in the sort of gates, if you will, for qualifying for special education, parental consent, and then MTSS, multi-tier systems of support. Our first meeting was right before Thanksgiving, and we had a good amount of public comment there, and then generated some questions from our groups that we thought would benefit from further, further feedback and response, and passed those questions along to Jackie Kelleher at the Agency of Ed. We sent it to Marilyn Husky and Megan Roy, who co-chair the Advisory Committee, and the VCSEA, the Association of Special Educators, and received feedback from all groups. And that information and additional feedback, our second meeting was just on the 10th, and unfortunately, at that meeting, Bill and Angelita had unexpected conflicts and weren't able to join us. So Jenna and I heard further public comment, I believe we had seven folks weigh in, primarily parents, one being parent and educator, a couple of them were to provide their feedback on some of the challenges they've had with the way this system is currently working. We're hearing some themes of challenges with adverse effect and inconsistency in application, some concerns with how those are aligning with federal law. Parental consent is, folks are looking for there to be a greater opportunity to officially weigh in as a parent. Vermont has the initial identification, they get parental consent once and it's not required again. There are other states who approach it differently, and there's genuine concern that as the LEA responsible for delivering special education, its consent would hold up the process, that's the challenge as well. So we identified that as a conflict. And there, at our first meeting, we heard perhaps a compromise proposal that would include a parent comment form that wouldn't be required, but would put some structure to good practice, maybe? And I think one of the questions we're wrestling with is where that is rules or practice, and whether it is to be referenced, something as specific as a form be referenced in rules. There seems to be, I don't want to say consensus, but a strong opinion that MTSS is its own rule, that it may, it should not be used to delay identification for special ed purposes, that's in the law. But... But MTSS is ref, so it is not a special ed law or rule, MTSS, it is a function of general education. So having a separate section under special ed didn't, doesn't seem to make sense, but a separate rule for MTSS seems to have some traction from the various stakeholders. So I think that that, we are trying to put our heads around how that would happen where there's, there's, the only draft language on that came separately, not from the advisory group, because MTSS is not specific to special ed. So I think we need to think and get a little input on if it is a good idea that MTSS be its own rule, kind of like the funding piece of Act 173 became 1300. Does MTSS have a space for its own rule somewhere? And how does that process happen? And does it maybe parallel 2200? I don't, we don't have that fully fleshed out. We, without our full group together, and I think without the opportunity to have heard all the public comment through the end of the year, because I did receive outreach from Jeff Francis, for instance, who said, obviously, the work the superintendent's folks have done now is related to the pandemic, and they will expect to be providing feedback by the end of the year. So we are absolutely waiting and interested to see the remainder of the feedback we get. At the meeting we just had on the 10th, Marilyn Mahusky attended, and let us know that they, from Vermont Legal Aid, had met with the VCSA folks and felt that with a small group, they could help inform our thinking as a committee, and offered to join us at our next committee meeting after the first of the year, when we have full comment, and they may have suggestions for areas where they see commonality in improving the rules. And so we've since received an email on that, and we'll look forward to coordinating schedules to do that, and hopefully Jackie Kelleher could also join us. I think we'll benefit from that level of expertise in formulating our final recommendation to the board. Are there any questions? And certainly, actually, Bill, Jenna, and Angelita, what have I missed?
Any comments, Bill, Angelita, Jenna? Thank you, Kim, for that summary. Just to be very clear for everybody, this committee has refrained from coming into any firm conclusions at this time, out of respect for the public comment period, which expires at the end of this month. After that, they're going to start to bring the hammer down and make some recommendations to us at our January meeting. And it's our hope that in the January meeting, we could adopt those recommendations. And if there's just not a strong enough consensus to do that, we would ask the committee to go back and make further changes, if necessary, to get us a bundle of these non-Act 173 recommendations, if you will. I want to just, I have spent a fair amount of time reviewing the written comments, and I must say, you've received some awfully high-quality analyses by both parents as well as stakeholders. Marilyn Mahusky's work stands out, it seems to me. There are several parents who've done an enormous amount of good analysis for us. And then there've been some wonderfully passionate and moving statements, which count a lot also. A young man, a 13-year-old boy, gave us an audio comment that was just very powerful and cannot be ignored. So I think you've elicited a real treasure trove of very high-quality and valuable feedback. As I, as I look at this, I sense that there's a kind of cleavage between the way that parents and children are experiencing special education and the way that LEAs and educators, those so-called professionals, are experiencing this. And there does seem to be a divergence in their points of view. And this reminds me a lot of my own life experience in continuous improvement. And an essential element in continuous improvement is to embrace what's not working, to see problems as your friend. Problems tell you how to fix things, where. The other part of continuous improvement is to listen to your customer. And the perspective of customers, in many settings, needs to outweigh the point of view of employees manufacturing the product or providing the service. And there's no firm and fast rule about that, but the perspective of the customers really, really needs to be, I think, very, very carefully considered. And if things come out about equal, my personal preference is to err on the side of the customer, because the customer knows what the experience is. That said, I think you do face some real conflicts between the way some of the Special Education Association see things and the way parents and their advocates see things. And I, you, you've, I think you've done a great job in eliciting very, very rich commentary. There's a lot to sort through here. And all board members, I would encourage you to prepare for the January meeting by taking time to read these recommendations. One of the comments that really struck out to me, that was made by Marilyn Mahusky a couple times, is that rules, rules have far more power than recommendations of practice and procedure. And I think that that not only makes sense, I think it's really applicable here. What, I think there are two concerns that we can have about our special education system in Vermont. One is it's not doing very well. The federal government has identified Vermont as one of only two states needing intervention and remediation in its special education system. We can quibble about whether we need it more than New York or less, or than the Virgin Islands, but that alone ought to be a cause for concern, that the structure, the effectiveness of our special education system, all the way from the special, from the Agency of Education, down into the LEAs, down into the way special ed services are delivered, is not working very well. That was certainly a part of the FEG report. And the second, the second is that there is a wide variation in how local LEAs and the schools are performing and implementing the rules that exist. We've seen a number of cases where a student was in one school system and couldn't get services, the family moved to another school district, and the child qualified for services. The same child, under the same set of laws, policies, and guidelines, and the local people are handling it very differently. I can't presume to know why that's so, but it's safe to say that variation is the enemy of quality. If one person is doing it one way and another person is doing it a totally different way, they're not both right, especially if there's a set of clear rules. So I think anything we can do to strengthen the guardrails that the local LEAs are working within is all to the good, and rules are, short of statute, rule is the most powerful form of guiding people in how to manage this process. So pardon me for that long homily, but I do think that you have, I really see some powerful consensus emerging about the need for more guidance, more explicit, directive, controlling guidance, and nothing is better than rules for doing that.
Thank you, John. I think we're definitely seeing that, and I think, knowing how difficult it is to go through the process, I think to the extent we can ensure that we are bringing up-to-date the alignment with federal regulation and referencing best practice within that context in a way that wouldn't require change if thinking changes, or evidence changes, or better practice changes. So that's, I think, the balance we're trying to strike, that the specificity doesn't cause it to be outdated, but rather perhaps that reference to best practice requires some way of accountability to that practice, which I think is, we certainly have heard there to be an inconsistency that is not serving all kids well. So I think that is, the needle will try to thread, and the work ahead of us, and we're trying to be, bring as many folks to the table in informing that discussion with us. So I look forward to an early January meeting with a small group of those folks who can bring some expertise to our thinking.
Yeah, I would encourage you, provide whatever political cover we can to you, to, don't be afraid to require local LEAs and special education administrators to have to change the way they do things, because change is mandatory. The status quo is unacceptable. And so if your rules are going to require that some LEAs have to do things differently than they have been doing them, that's probably a very good thing. Other comments?
Oh, yeah, I have a quick question, if I may. Peter here. To me, the most critical issue is how IEPs are established and agreed on. And there is a, there is a wide variety of, you know, differentiation here. How can that be best addressed? Thank you.
I think that there are the recommendations of those experiences in having parents as partners and guardians of partners and an opportunity to weigh in. And the challenge with the professionals who have trained their lives to deliver special ed for students, knowing perhaps all the options that are there. So continuing to have partnership in that work is really important, to have ways for, some of the things that have come before us, which I think are just common sense and make sense, is just as we receive packages of information in advance of these board meetings, that there be 48 hours or five days ahead of IEP meetings, that parents will receive all information that will be discussed. So some things that just honestly seem to make common sense, and I'm imagining, are in practice in many districts, but in many of the folks we're hearing from, that is not what they're experiencing. And so frankly, again, that is an area where I think there needs to be improvement, and I don't imagine that that best practice is terribly fluid, because I don't think you want to set up a circumstance where the LEA, the educators, are always in a place of having to defend their practice against being grieved. But I think it is really important that the best practice be followed as rule, if you will. I mean, there, I think there are going to be some pieces of that parental consent or otherwise. I understand, I think, the challenge in having to wait for parental consent or track it down, but rather have there be an avenue for documented, easily documented parent feedback, because you don't want to make that process onerous for parents either. And you certainly don't want the LEA, who's responsible for delivering the services, to not be able to act on what they understand from their professional opinions to be most important for that student. So it's a partnership, and figuring out how the process consistently allows for that is really important, without getting in the way of services to kids. So I think you're definitely right, Peter, that understanding how that IEP meeting can work better for everybody is one really important piece of this that we're looking closely at.
Can I just quickly follow up in regards to the roles of advocates? I mean, advocates can really make a significant difference in this process.
Yeah, they've been very helpful. Marilyn Mahusky and Rachel Seelig both have been able to provide their perspective as advocates that are working with families when they are in sort of the grievance procedure. And I think that you don't want a system that relies on that being the default that gets the parent's voice to the table most forcefully. So I think we keep that in mind in trying to, like, offer the guidelines, the guardrails you're talking about, John, that maybe codify what is best practice in these areas for a participatory experience around IEPs, just in sort of foreshadowing a little of the thinking. And again, like Rachel had brought to us, a parent comment form, which wouldn't be required, but it would be a space for parents to document their feedback from the IEP meeting and the questions. And right now, that might be happening in best practice some places and not in others, but it wouldn't be required if there was nothing to document. Parents wouldn't need to do it, it wouldn't hold up. So that's just one of, I think, the maybe compromises to this partial consent that is, is, I think, what New Hampshire does and has been referenced by some of our testimony that we've taken a couple of different times. I think there's some concern that if you're, if you're parsing out the IEP, it isn't a holistic approach to services, and I think that has some concern for the professionals. So it might be, you know, it might be the compromise that creating structure around a forum for feedback that doesn't dismantle services in pieces is the route to go. So again, a little bit of a foreshadowing for things that we thought made common sense.
Excuse me, Kim. We have a guest who's joined us, but please, this is a meeting, and so this is a formal proceeding, so we would appreciate it if you would either turn off your camera or otherwise conduct yourselves as if you were present at the table. Thank you. So, all right, Kim, I guess I hear you saying that there's a tension between, in a way, the way other states do things, and they seem to work pretty well there, like parental consent in New Hampshire, and you're hearing from educators, well, we've had problems with that, and we've always done it this way. This is just my personal advocacy. My personal advocacy is to you, is going to be err on the side of best practices, and don't worry about whether people have always done it that way. Some of these things need to change. And the way we've always done it in Vermont is not, that's not reason to keep doing it. What is best for the children and the families is the reason. So anyway, that's just my advocacy.
Thank you.
When you come back with recommendations, I want to support them, but if they're not standing up for families and children and challenging our special educators to do better, then I personally will be disappointed, for what that's worth. I think this is a time to be brave.
Yeah, and I think that that was our passion in pursuing these issues that we were hearing the greatest feedback on, that being silent on whatever our recommendation would be, even if it were to leave it, which I don't foresee happening. I imagine that we'll be recommending some version of changes to each of these pockets. But even had the answer been, after gathering all the data, that we felt it didn't need to change, it would be incumbent on us to would be incumbent on us to have looked at that closely and explain our why. So do expect that our committee will come back with our recommendation and our why around our recommendation.
Absolutely. I'm sure you will. I'm sure you will.
That's our plan.
Yeah, that's great. You folks have done terrific work. I'm grateful to all four of you, you especially, Kim, for your good work. And Jen, I know you've been really in on this, on Elita and Bill both. So we thank you very much for your work. Are there comments or questions for the committee? Well, this has been great. Thank you so much. You've given us a window to what's ahead. And it's not easy. It's very complex. You're making tough choices. And we will look forward to your report in January. And perhaps things will be mature enough in January that the board can sign on to a set of final recommendations. But frankly, if it takes till February to get there, I think that's fine as well. But by February, the board's really got a fisher cut bait on all of this. Yeah.
I think part of it will depend on getting that smaller group together to inform our committee. So at our next meeting, I'm hopeful that that could be early in January, so we might be prepared to be able to digest all of that and come up with our final recommendations.
Right. Good. And if you're able to share it back with the advisory group and the agency, of course, both of their perspectives are important to us.
Yes, I hope that they'll join us at that meeting represented for me to those groups.
Good. Good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all, four of you. Thank you very much. Probably largely due to my loquaciousness, we are running over schedule. And so we were scheduled to have an hour and 15 minute lunch. In the interest of everybody's waistlines, it's now down to about 25 minutes. So we'd like to resume, let's resume at 1:10. I'm sure we can complete our business on schedule. So it's now, I have 12. What time do we have now? Am I misreading my clock? I think we're way ahead of schedule. Yes, we are way ahead of schedule. So Jennifer, did you have a comment?
I was going to say, I think it's only 11:35. I think we're ahead.
Right. Pardon me. I'm misreading my clock. So we are 10 minutes ahead of schedule. Let's, we're scheduled to have the hearing at 2. Let's reconvene then at 1 o'clock. That gives you a lot of time. That gives you, that seems sort of crazy. I hate to do that. What is your preference? We can finish up our work. We have at most an hour of board work to do. And then we have one hour of public hearing. We cannot change the time of the public hearing, because the public is counting upon that time being available. So, but we can, we can do, we have a couple of options. We can take a long and leisurely lunch and start at 1, or, and we'll be done by 2, and we can then have the hearing. Or we can take our normal 30 minute lunch and get back to work. And then those of you who wish to could leave the meeting, though I'm sure that members of the committee would want to stay. And I would certainly stay to receive public comment. I'm not encouraging you to miss the public comment period, but I'm looking for a sentiment as to, which would you prefer? Jennifer?
Is it possible that we could keep working now and jump ahead to items at least, you know, J and K?
A and L. Sure.
And then put lunch out for an hour?
Yes. Yes, that would be a long period until, and then we would return and do the hearing. How do people feel about that? Are you up for that? No objections? Okay. Let's pile ahead then. So the next topic then is the annual report. And I have sent to you a draft of the annual report. And I welcome your comments. I would like to button this up by the end of this month. And my expectation is that it would go out to the General Assembly on the 5th of January, which is when the General Assembly reconvenes. Comments?
Are you asking for comments on your annual report?
That is correct.
On page two, the last sentence, "Accordingly, the board has brought the matter and possible need for modification of statute to the attention of the appropriate committees of the General Assembly." This is relative to Act 46. Could you flesh that out a little bit more?
I'm sorry, Peter. You're on page two, last paragraph. Dan, I can't hear you. I think you may be muted.
Sorry. Can you repeat?
I thought I saw you trying to say something.
No.
Peter, re pose your question again, please.
Okay. So the last two, yet this is on this last sentence, the last two sentences of the last paragraph on page one. Yet this aggregation of school governance appears to be inconsistent with the legislature's purpose in Act 46. Accordingly, the board has brought the matter and the possible need for modification of statute to the attention of the appropriate committees of the General Assembly. I'm just asking some more details about that, because I'm not familiar with that.
Yes. You may recall that after our meeting with the representatives of the town of Halifax, in which they asked the board's consent to separate themselves from a joint district with the adjacent town of Redesborough, the board did grant that request. And in the course of that discussion, both with Halifax and afterwards, the board expressed the sentiment that this was a bit frustrating, because the statute allowed us only to consider the well-being of the children of Halifax. There was no consideration allowed with regard to the well-being of the children of Redesborough, the other partner in this union that was dismantled. And the board felt that that was problematic, that we were unable to take that into account. Also, the board wondered if, since the language of statute that we were obliged to follow long predated Act 46, the board wondered if these rules for divorce, in effect, were consistent with what the General Assembly had in mind when it adopted Act 46. And so you, the board, directed me, the chair, to communicate to the chairs of the two committees on education, the board's experience with the statute. Not making a recommendation, but only posing the question, and you have copies of that letter, I provided you a draft, and you approved it and directed me to send it to the committees, only posing the question, are you satisfied that these old provisions about dismantling school districts are consistent with your objectives as they were formed and were articulated in Act 46? Does that answer your question, Peter?
Yes, it does. I mean, I just, I have to say that this could be like the unraveling of a ball of string in regards to the purpose of Act 46 and in regards to the mergers and consolidation of governance and whatnot. So I'd love to hear from others on this front. But to me, it's an intriguing quandary or relative to what, how Act 46 was enacted and how we did our share in regards to, you know, making decisions, decisive decisions in terms of how this was going to be, and, you know, applied. And do you have any thoughts on this?
In terms of what the board's advocacy should be, or the specific topic?
Peter?
Anyway, it's just in regards to what would precipitate or these kinds of dissolvedment or of these unions. It's, to me, it's a curious question, because I could snowball, and a lot of districts come forward and use the same logic or reasoning to proceed with it, to the dissolution of these unions.
Well, Peter, that is correct. And that's precisely why you directed me to communicate to the chairs of the House Committee and Senate Committee, the possibility that the provisions of statute that are, I think, 15 years old, might be undoing the legislature's intent in Act 46. That's why we brought the matter to their attention.
And I apologize, because I could be overreactive relative to what role I played in all of this. So that's why I'm bringing it up.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Oliver.
Sorry. Yeah, I think Bill, excuse me, not Peter, I may be mistaken, but I think you may not have been at the meeting where we discussed this at some length and directed the chair to send a letter on this very topic. So I think, you know, this paragraph is essentially restating what's outlined in a bit more detail in the letter that the chair sent. I do have just one suggested tweak in the second, the penultimate sentence in that paragraph.
Yes.
So where it says legislature's purposes, I think it, rather than use the word purposes, I think we should be really specific and reference goals. That's really the issue, is that these requests, and we should also mention, I think it's worth mentioning that there are others that we anticipate that have been, that are out in the public domain. So to Peter's point, we will see more of these. That is a certainty. And the question before the legislature is, we want to put them on notice that current statute has us going down a path that is very much out of, that is incongruent with the goals of Act 46, and specifically the goals around sustainable governance.
Right. Yeah. And it was our view that we were, we did not need to take a position on this matter so much as to say it would appear to be inconsistent or incongruent with the goals, and you ought to take a look at that. If the legislature in its wisdom concludes that there is no inconsistency, so be it. But it certainly was, I think we found the language to be very much a straitjacket on the board. And at the very least, the fact that we couldn't consider the well-being of all of the children in the district being dissolved was a cause of concern. Any other?
No, I mean, we might want to consider, and I'm happy to leave it out, but we might want to consider just perhaps a suggestion that the legislature consider empowering the board to conduct a process of realignment that is consistent with the goals of Act 46. So for example, you know, there could be a requirement that districts that are looking to dissolve, because that particular configuration isn't in their best interests, you know, would be permitted to do so, but they would have to seek, as part of that, they would have to seek alternative arrangements that the board finds are consistent with the goals, very much in essentially go through the similar process we went through originally with Act 46.
Yeah. I believe, Dan, correct me, that we have authority to direct realignment of districts. Arlington is a good example.
No, that's supervisor, that's supervisor union boundaries. I'm talking school governance, school district governance.
School district alignments.
That's the issue. Yeah. But I'll let Dan chime in.
No, I was just going to agree with Oliver. The board has authority over SU composition. Not much authority, other than through the 706 process on SU, or, excuse me, district configuration, governance.
But let's give that some thought. Oliver, if you want to give me some language for an additional sentence, one sentence only, I can fit that in here.
Okay.
Other comments or questions, please? I see, Bill, you have your hand up. Bill, I can't see you. Can you unmute, perhaps? You appear to be muted. Bill, can you unmute, please? Suzanne, do you have any recommendations for Bill?
Going to see if I can unmute him. And I cannot unmute him.
Bill, are you able to bring up the ribbon on your screen by moving your cursor onto the screen? Do that and see, you'll see that your microphone has a slash through it. Click on that microphone.
Okay. There.
There. So you have your hand up, Bill. Would you like to comment on?
Yes, very briefly, is that I think this is a very important issue, but I just don't think it stands out enough. I think it may be the way it's organized, but it seems like it's almost buried there. And, you know, it is a big issue.
You're referring to the divorce of districts? Is that correct? Bill, are you referring to, when you say this issue, are you referring to the disaggregation of districts?
Act 46. And, yes, the disaggregation of districts.
Well, we will be talking about a legislative agenda. And the next item on the list. So that may be a place where we should elaborate your concerns and highlight them. Would that be all right?
Sure.
Because this is an annual report, and it's kind of a broad retrospective. But I'm perfectly happy to add language and concern in the preparation of a legislative agenda. Further comments or questions about this annual?
Excuse me. If we do follow up on this, would it be possible to have Donna help us? If we do follow up on this, would it be possible to have Donna help us or be a part of the conversation?
When you say follow up on this, we're talking about the drafting of the annual report.
Yes, yes.
And what is it you are proposing?
Oh, if we do pursue the Act 46 issue, you know, that's all I'm bringing up, but this is not germane to your report at this point, so that can be deferred. So I apologize.
All right, thank you. Jenna, you have a comment? Jenna, you need to unmute.
Sorry. I think it's worth, in point number four about convening public conversations, to mention the work of the student members there, kind of casting a statewide initiative and launching some analysis and presenting it to the governor. I mean, I think that's really noteworthy and should be cited there.
Good, I will do that. I will, I will work that into paragraph four. Thank you. You student members are such superstars, just wonderful. We really love you, we really do.
Well, thanks to you guys for making it fun to be on the board.
Fun, really?
Well, you know. For most of it.
Any other comments? Now, Board, I would like to ask you to approve the report at this meeting, so, but condition, your approval would be conditioned upon trusting me to work in at line four on the first page, some admiring reference to the student members and their survey work, and at the bottom paragraph on page for another sentence from Oliver pertaining to this disaggregation in Act 46.
And changing purpose to goals.
That was, yes, thank you, yes. So those would be the changes I would make with assistance from Oliver, and Jenna, if you had any language you could send to me, what you have in mind, really the students and their role of informing us, I would welcome that. But if you all are comfortable with that, I would ask that there be a motion to approve the annual report as it has been proposed to be modified.
So moved.
It's been moved by Oliver, I think Oliver, was that you?
Affirmative.
It's been moved by Oliver. Is there a second? Bill, you want to speak?
I can second that.
Thank you, Kim. It's been seconded by Kim. Is there discussion of the motion? It's been moved and seconded to direct the chair to modify the draft annual report at item four on first page and the last paragraph on the first page in the matters that have been just discussed.
I think the only thing, it's Kim, I was just going to suggest, Jenna, in addition to referencing the students' work, if we do in that initial list, the paragraph that discusses those conversations would allow a little more space to expand on the students' network.
Yeah, yeah, the paragraph on page two.
That's what I was thinking, in the narrative, actually have a sentence.
Great, that's a great suggestion, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions, comments, that is, on the matter before the board? Kim, your hand is up, or you're, that's okay. So then, are you ready for the question? The question is, shall the board direct the chair to send to the governor and the General Assembly an annual report as drafted and reviewed today with changes as discussed in the bottom, the bottom paragraph of the first page and the third, the second paragraph of the second page pertaining to students? Are you ready for that question? Will you call the roll, please, Suzanne?
I will. Sabina Broshu?
Aye.
Kim Gleason?
Aye.
Bill Mathis?
Aye.
Oliver Olson?
Yes.
Peter Pelz?
Aye.
Jennifer Samuelson?
Aye.
Jenna O'Farrell?
Aye.
Chair Carroll, will you be voting?
I'll decline to vote, thank you. And so it appears your vote is unanimous, and thank you for that, and I'll make those changes. And I will send you the revised draft, and if you would read it and catch me in any grammatical errors or anything like that, I'd be most appreciative. And barring any unforeseen problems, we will make this report available, just as we did last year, to the General Assembly. Last year, I went on a bit of a pilgrimage and visited with a lot of legislative leaders, which was really worth doing. I got to meet some people of another generation in the General Assembly, people I had not known when I was there. And unfortunately, that sort of process is not going to be able to happen, which is a pity. Nothing, when it comes to legislators, nothing beats face-to-face contact. We'll just have to do our best this year. Thank you all for that discussion. We now would move on to item K. The topic is draft a proposed legislative initiative, discuss, vote. I did not send you anything, so there's nothing to vote on. I, you know, our rule is, we don't ask you to vote unless you've had a chance to see it before the meeting. And the reason I didn't send you anything was I felt that it was premature of me to do that, that if I wrote something up, it would be too much mine and not ours. So what I would rather is that we have a discussion and you advise me, please, on what you'd like to see in a legislative agenda, and I will draft that and send it to you in time for the January meeting, which would be plenty of time for us to adopt it. And so with that said, what are your thoughts about legislative agenda? We've touched upon disaggregation of schools. What are your other, your other thoughts?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
So if we could just pick up again on the disaggregation of school districts, I want to be really clear, we're talking school districts, not supervisory unions. If we can explore that a little bit more, because I really do agree with Peter that that's, that's a big issue. And I think that there is an elegant sort of way forward that I'd like to put before the board to think about, perhaps between now and the next meeting, as a proposal to the General Assembly. And that is simply that for any district, any unified school district that is seeking to dissolve, we would essentially go through the exact same process that we went through with Act 46. So that ensures that, that there's a mechanism for school districts to reconfigure themselves, and there continues to be a mechanism to do that, but those reconfigurations are handled by the board in a manner that is consistent with the goals of Act 46 and the original process that we went through. And I think it's important because it, A, upholds the goal set, our set forth in law, and B, provides a measure of fairness to those districts who did go through either voluntarily or through fiat of this board, a merger process. And I think it's a bit unfair to those districts that, you know, we, you know, allow, or that the, there's allowed, you know, a backdoor. So that's my general sort of approach. I think it's a fairly simple way to address the issue that provides some flexibility, but also continuity and consistency with the general principles outlined in Act 46. And curious other, other thoughts, and also I'd be very interested to hear Dan's thoughts on that.
Dan, your thoughts?
Yeah, we haven't, I would say, we, the agency hasn't really developed a policy disposition to this, but I, that's my question to Peter before, I struggle a little bit, I think, in my role as secretary to give the board the room to advance its own policy interests or direction, and if there's an overlap between the administration's priorities, then we'd be happy to collaborate on that, but we haven't really developed a perspective on that. That being said, I will observe, as you have, that there's, I think, a bit of an incongruity between the goals of Act 46 and Section 721, which hasn't really been updated, shall we say. So I think, I think it's a good topic to raise with the General Assembly.
I would, Board, if you're in agreement, I would ask Oliver to flesh out in a paragraph or two, max, Oliver, the issues at hand and the possible remedy.
May I, may I ask that, too? I would like to work with Oliver on that, or at least exchange ideas.
Please do, please do. To the two of you, what I would appreciate is that you have that prepared by, in early January, so that I can integrate it with any draft of legislative priorities that would be sent to you all in connection with the next packet for the January meeting. So if you, Oliver, together with Peter, can put together a draft of language to address this question, that would be great.
And it looks like Kim has some thoughts.
Kim?
Yeah, I do not want to work with you on it, no, just kidding. I am grateful that you folks will work on that. I think having a process by which we will consider these as they come before us is important in addition to advocacy for a legislative fix, so the backdoor doesn't exist. I think it's not an either-or, but I appreciate that we might try and codify a practice that we would be doing in our, if these come before us, while.
Oh, no, to be, yeah, no, to be absolutely clear, Kim, this, this does absolutely require a legislative solution. I was just proposing that the legislature make that adjustment that empowers us to, you know, basically become the curvature of those issues.
We cannot do this by rule without legislative change.
Got it.
Exactly.
Okay.
Okay, are there other topics that you believe that the board should be urging upon or bringing to the attention of the General Assembly or even advocating for? Bill, you mentioned the census-based funding, I'm sorry, the waiting study. And what are you, do you have any thoughts that what we should be doing about that vis a vis the General Assembly?
Well, I think we should engage in it. Which way we go with that is open for discussion. We could simply make an endorsement of what they're talking about. We could push it a little bit harder and develop some other kinds of plans and things of that sort. The big question is going to be whether the waiting study can really go anywhere, given the way that things are. Do we redistribute the existing pot in which it's winners or losers, or do we go for what the waiting study is saying, which is probably not affordable under the circumstances? So what we should do probably is make a recommendation that they take up these issues, but I'm loath to put exactly what that should be down, because they should, we'll have to determine that, and that's not a role that we can do. In other words, just making sure that it's on the table.
Kim?
Yeah. I, I would agree, and I think maybe we can go so far as to say that it be considered in the context of enhancing delivery to students or outcomes for students, because if it is implemented at a time at which it can only serve to reduce taxes in communities, as the community would look towards changing our practice in coming years, it would be another increase. That there'd be a decrease in taxes and then an increase in taxes, it doesn't, I think the waiting study's intent is to have funding aligned with the cost of delivering services to students, and it comes in in a way that that opportunity to change delivery to students has, you know, passed the budget period or otherwise. Last year, it was demand that it come in after budgets had been approved. That only serves to reduce taxes, and that in a subsequent year only serves to increase taxes. So I think it needs to be thoughtfully approached, and so I guess my recommendation would be that we, we could go so far as to say it be considered in a manner that would serve to, to improve outcomes for students, or something to that effect.
Jennifer?
And in a manner that is over a timeframe that allows for adjustments, and that are going to be losers. Some way to approach it, that it's less about winners and losers and more about equity and educational opportunities for all students in the state as a public good. I'm sounding like this.
Jennifer, you have a comment?
Yes, I think if we are going to be opining on the waiting study, I think it's important to take into account, and, you know, my understanding of the study is perhaps more limited than other people on the school board, but I do know that in this particular area of Vermont, and in particular, the town that I come from, there are many, many more students who attend independent schools, and I would want to ensure that any waiting study provides for a way to capture the expense of educating students who attend independent schools, because many of these schools don't have free and reduced lunch, they don't have other mechanisms that I think are easily recognized as ways to capture additional needs. So I think if we are going to be saying anything to the legislature, it probably needs to be even-handed, and if we're, you know, opening up this formula, it needs, you know, we should take this opportunity to make sure that it's fairly, including all students across the state.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I think on that point, just to drill down a little bit more, you know, the free and reduced lunch program is used as a proxy for poverty, and what Jen is getting at is that in many parts of the state, just because of the way in which education is delivered, it is not a valid proxy for poverty. So I think we, and that's going to be a very key component of, or that was a key component of the waiting study, and something that we of the waiting study, and something that we just need to be really mindful of, because it can create some, it can further exasperate some inequity that already exists.
Right. It understates poverty in certain areas.
Absolutely, and I, I mean, I've done some of my own analysis, just as an example, comparing FRL numbers in school districts with poverty counts from the, the US Census or, you know, household income, and, you know, the, there's a pretty significant, you know, differential or coefficient, if you will, of, of difference across the state that we really need to be mindful of.
Bill, you had a further comment?
Yes. What I was pushing for is, Kim has really done, just said it, in terms of equity, if we could use equity as the means by which we approach this, as opposed to winners and losers, I think that would be better, and equity would include questions like private schools and public schools, as well as all the other categoricals that are in there. That's basically it.
Thank you, Bill. Let me ask you all a question to which I don't know the answer. I don't even presume to guess the answer. Already Vermont spends more per student than most states in the country. Can we stipulate to that fact?
Yes, on a per pupil basis.
So what the waiting study says is that we are not spending as much money on about a third of our students as we need to be, by significant amount. I mean, if you, if I read the waiting study correctly, there, there would be a threefold increase in spending on children from, in certain cohorts, so that the average cost of educating a child with acute disadvantage is, is not $17,000 a year. The waiting study says it's $25,000 to $35,000 a year or more. Is that right?
Well, yeah.
Talk about--
Go ahead.
When you talk about winners and losers, it's very hard for me to imagine the state, which already spends more per capita than most states, increasing the total amount of funding in such a way that all districts are held harmless. I think there have to be winners and losers. I don't see how you can do this without, without some districts getting less money because their needs are less. Those are districts who, in fact, historically have in effect been getting more money than they deserve, according to the waiting study. So what are your thoughts about that?
That's a pretty big issue.
Yeah.
First, Oliver mentioned getting rid of FRL as a poverty indicator, and, yeah, I think he's right there, and the literature would say that as well. In terms of getting three times as much money, what they did in the waiting study was look at what would it take to overcome the effects of poverty? That's your dependent variable at the end of things. But, and then they just played with a regression equation to make sure they had what it would take to make that happen, and that's going to call for a lot of outside-the-school activities. And I think that the big question is what do we do as social policy to reduce the overall income and opportunity gaps? And I don't think there's a chance in the world of coming in with $45,000 per student. I mean, that's not going to happen, but I think that we will have to reach broader in the people who look at this poverty business, I mentioned Sean Reardon at Stanford, is really looking outside of the school, and I think there are some limits to what we can do inside the school without going through broader kinds of programs.
Thank you, Bill. Other comments or responses to the conundrum I'm posing about refund this?
Well, just to add to the conundrum, this, if you think of Act 60 as a tax equity issue, and, and what we're now talking about is education and equity, that has been a monkey on our back for a long time.
Yep. Well, all right, so this is a great topic for us to include in our legislative agenda. It needs to be reduced to writing, if you want it to be in a legislative agenda, and the writing needs to be clear and actionable. General, I mean, general, general principles and advocacy's are nice, but I think you have to answer the question, what's the legislature supposed to do tomorrow? And so who wants to be, Oliver and Peter volunteered to draft a piece about Act 46 and disaggregation. Who will draft a similarly crisp, two or three paragraph piece about the waiting study?
Piece of cake.
Okay, remember, it needs to be actionable.
I agree with what you're saying, is there's too many mission statements that says every student shall grow wings and fly.
Right, right.
That doesn't cut it.
So, Bill, it's a piece of cake. Who would, who would like to join Bill in this effort? Not that he needs any help, I assure you. Bill, I think you're on your own.
Hi.
Oh, hello? Kim?
It's Kim. I was just going to say I'm happy to take a look.
Bless your heart, Bill, Kim.
I would as well.
Oh, Jenna, too. Wonderful. The three of you there, please.
Thanks, Bill.
And if any of you students want to be part of any of this, although you've got plenty on your plates, don't hesitate to pipe up. So Jenna, and Kim, and Bill, you guys work it out? Please have some language to me. Two, three paragraphs is plenty. It needs to be as crisp as you can make it, as actionable as you can make it, and to, please have that to me within the first two or three days of the new year at the latest. Thank you very much. Are there other issues that you would wish to see in a legislative agenda? This is not an issue about education out there, it's about the board. We began last year with great success in working with the Senate Committee on Education to draft S-166, which became the bill to reform the State Board of Education and to clarify some of the boundary lines between the agency and the board. The committee passed a bill out unanimously, it went to the Senate floor and was passed, and then was sent to the House where it was referred to the Committee on Education, and then the epidemic essentially just caused any non-essential legislation to be deep-sixed, because that was the end of the biennium. No legislation that was not passed, legislation that was not passed dies. And so we're starting from scratch, and it's certainly my intention to resume the work on the reform legislation. And the Chair of House, Ed, has offered to draft the legislation, basically taking the Senate bill that was approved, modifying it as the House sees fit, and moving it through. But we are starting from scratch, and presumably, we don't even know who the chairs of these committees will be, but it's pretty safe to assume that if they want them, each of the two chairs will be assigned those duties. So I guess I would add a third agenda item, which is legislation that completes the reform of the General Assembly, of the State Board. Just to put some context on this, this is especially for those of you who are new to the board. A year ago, at about this time, a so-called Sunset Committee advocated for the elimination of the State Board of Education. Termination. Finish. And the reason for that is a history in prior years of the board getting, quote, "over its skis" and doing some things that the General Assembly regarded as not permitted by statute and, in fact, intruding upon the legislative prerogative to make policy. And so there was a lot of accumulated anger from three and four years ago toward the State Board, and when the Sunset Committee was putting, went into business, they recommended the elimination of the State Board. And that essentially meant the State Board would disappear, because we exist only because the legislature creates us. The moment the legislature says there is no State Board, we're out of business. And I worked very hard, and Kim and Peter Velt helped me, to restore some confidence in the State Board and to assure them that the State Board was prepared to constrain its authorities within the limits of law as opposed to outside the limits of law. And, and so we kind of saved the board from, we, we gave the legislature confidence that the board is serious about narrowing and focusing its authorities where they should be, and to write law that clarifies that. So it's imperative that we continue with this, else the hostility toward the board will, I think, reemerge, because many of the legislators who wanted to see us be put out of business are still there. We have some allies, and we have some supporters, and I think we can, I think it's imperative that we adopt this legislation. In fact, I was told very clearly by two of the three, two of the key legislators who were behind this terminate the State Board movement, that if we revise and clarify and narrow the authorities of the State Board, they will stand back and not press their case. So we need to do that.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah. Go ahead.
May I ask a provocative question?
Wouldn't be the first time.
I'd like to know what the Secretary's position is on the future of the State Board.
Mr. Secretary, do you wish to respond?
I don't know. I'm still waiting. Was that the provocative question?
That, that wasn't, no, and it's, you know, I think there's been, I, I think it's, yeah, it's a little bit provocative, but I think it's important that we're very, we're all very clear about what your position is vis a vis, you know, whether the board should continue or not continue, and, and what your, your advocacy is going to be along those lines, and, you know, depending on what your posture is, I, you know, I, I think, you know, that, you know, will inform possibly some different approaches that the board may wish to take.
Yeah, I think, you know, my analysis, you know, we ended up, so the Chair and I ended up on certain different perspectives on that in the last session. My analysis is still based on a lens I call policy coherence, which, you know, once again, be happy to sort of share that with the board. I think there is a role for the board, but it has, it has to be reviewed, and it's not based, as John mentioned, on some of the actions of prior boards. I don't think that's a good basis for an analysis, because those things can come and go, but we have to look at the structures, and I'm, I'm very interested in this idea of having the law, you know, inform regulation, and that regulation be held accountable, and that we're following up on metrics and outcomes and so forth. So my, my conclusion there is that the agency should have control of regulation, but it is, as John mentioned, it's a sort of a reset with the start of a new biennium, so we'll see how that goes. I will say, we're, we, meaning the policy team at the agency and the governor's staff, are still early, we're still working on our policy approaches to several of these issues, so we haven't settled on a specific response yet to this issue, other than to say, my, my thinking hasn't changed on it.
Your thinking has not changed?
Has not changed.
So your thinking was that the board should be eliminated? You wrote that down very clearly in your plan. Is that still your answer?
No, it isn't what I wrote, but I don't, if we were to get into that, I'd be happy to submit what I provided in writing, and we can put it as an agenda item on the, on the meeting, because that's, that's a mischaracterization of my position.
Your blueprint, Dan, that you, that you published early in your administration, involved eliminating the State Board, and you use those words.
That is correct. That is not what I provided as testimony to the legislature, though, last session.
I understand that, but the question I'm posing to you is, are you standing by your blueprint, or have you changed your position that was, that the State Board should be eliminated? Have you changed that position?
From a legislative point, that's not what I've been advocating for. The blueprint document was at a different moment in time, and it was based on a different, different context altogether. It was basically an editorial comment to make, make a recommendation that we design our future, and I took certain principles and drew them out that led me to conclude that, yes, the State Board could be eliminated, but the intention of that paper was then to provoke a conversation about what the design principles should be. I, I put some forward, based on my own experience and so forth, but it was not to suggest those should be the, the design principles. My point of that was to say Vermonters should engage in a conversation about an intentional design of our education system.
And, and if I can interrupt, I mean, I think, Dan, what you're saying, my recollection of that blueprint is that, that was sort of blue-sky thinking, you know, in a perfect world, if we had no constraints, you know, how, how would we operate? We're obviously not in a perfect world, and, you know, there are a lot of constraints we need to work within, and, you know, a lot of nuances to account for. So I think, I, I would suggest, Mr. Chair, we put the blueprint aside, because I, I do, well, I appreciate sort of the, I always appreciate blue-sky thinking. I, I think, you know, Mr. Secretary, I think that document i- in many different forms, I think, became a little bit of a, of a distraction. It was intended to be provocative, and it certainly was, but I, I think, really, just to get down to brass tacks, the, you know, what, my question was really, you know, the here and now, and, and the position as it relates to your thinking and what your recommendations or suggestions will be to the legislature about the role of the board and the kind of the here and now and the reality of, of our educational landscape. And I think, if I can play back what you're saying, is your recommendation would, would not be to eliminate the board, and you see that the board has a, a, a function in, in the environment as we will be living in for this foreseeable future. Is that a fair statement?
Yes, it is. My point was, my recommendation for the General Assembly last year has remained unchanged.
Any other comments or questions?
Just one quick comment. Peter, I, I think the work that, that we did last year was all, was, has still standing. I don't think that you have, we have to start over with what we, what we communicated and, and processed. I, I, you know what I mean? I, I think that, I think that, I think that still has standing in regards to where, where we would begin in the next biennium.
No, I, yeah, I, I would agree.
The Chair, the likely Chair of the House Committee said that she would be happy to frame legislation out of her committee based-- to frame legislation out of her committee based upon the legislation that was approved by the Senate. So that's a big step forward, and presumably the House Education Committee would, would, as they would have last year, impart their own twist on the legislation that was proposed. By the way, the nature of that legislation was to make a couple of things very clear. Number one, to make very, very clear that this Board shall never propose rules that are not explicitly directed by statute. Why do that? Because in the past, the past decade or so, there have been some instances where the Board proposed and adopted rules that simply were not visualized by statute. The second piece of it was to reassign the rulemaking authorities between the State Board and the Agency. As you know now, all rules are written by the Agency, by the Board, adopted by the Board, although the drafting of them involves the Agency inevitably. And in the Senate bill, the responsibility for writing rules, therefore the authority to make regulations, was divided about 50/50 between the Board and the Agency, whereas presently, all rules are written under the authority of the Board. So that was a significant shift in the assignment of responsibilities for regulation. Those are the two main elements in the bill. One is, to just reiterate, to make it very clear that we do not create policy in the sense of original policy that has no grounding in statute. Any policy implications of what we do must be foreseen by statute. And second, rulemaking should be better aligned with the interests and abilities of the two entities, the Board and the Agency. Now, Dan, you just said that you believe that all rulemaking should be under the authority of the Agency. That was, of course, not the arrangement that was negotiated in that bill, and certainly the Board will push back against that. Our experience, our experience with writing the rules for Rule 132360 were compelling evidences of why the Board needs to play a vital role in rulemaking. Kim, you have a comment?
Mr. Chair?
Kim has a comment.
Oh, sir.
Thank you. I think that it's really important to better define goals and responsibilities in the context of this work. I think I would agree that the rulemaking process for 132360 lends itself to a somewhat independent third party to be shepherding these rules, but I will say, it is complex, the technicalities of the laws around special education at the federal level and state level are challenging as a layperson to put your head around, so I think that's part of the rub. But I think that ideally, whatever this legislation might do, creates a framework that makes sense to have the State Board of Ed do its job to not just be rubber-stamping things, but that rather, where there's thoughtful and critical, perhaps intersection between or challenges between the interests of the Agency and the interests of those it's serving, the public, the students', education in general, that's, I think, a good place that the State Board retains its responsibilities, so there not be an appearance of conflicts of interest in the furtherance of education in the state of Vermont. I think we have a responsibility ourselves as well, and it's in law that we should have a strategic plan for education in the state, and we don't have a current one, so I think there are pieces of what our responsibilities are that would hopefully remain in the new law, that if, if we could pivot our focus in those directions, we, we might feel less transactional and more visionary. And I think that that is a really inspiring space for a State Board of Ed to operate, and I think it's well within the law for us to do that through our strategic plan or a current strategic plan, and I would invite us to consider that so that we aren't solely defined by our responsibilities in crafting rules. I would just offer that commentary in those thoughts.
Kim, I love your term "less transactional and more visionary." That certainly was one of the goals of the legislation. I mean, you know, why should this Board be having to approve the Secretary's determination on the number of snow days allowed to a school district? Well, we bring no value to that work, and yet there are tons and tons of administrative oversight details like that that we bring no value to, are purely transactional, create a burden for the Secretary needlessly, and the legislation cleared up a lot of that, eliminated those really vestigial arrangements. Keep in mind, this, the law comes from a place where the Board ran the Department of Education, was the Board of Directors. We aren't that anymore, haven't been for 10 years, and there's still pieces of the law that act as if we should be sort of in the shorts of the Secretary, and we shouldn't be. It's just not, we don't add value to that. So I agree with your term "less transactional and more visionary." I'd like to talk about a strategic plan question in the next topic, which is our work plan. So...
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Chair?
I'm sorry, you have your hand up. Go ahead.
First off is the, I think there's two facets of the State Board's work, but the first is, the Legislature can't really afford to get rid of us in the sense is that they have to have somebody who's going to take the hits on Act 46 and on other kinds of things, and this is not an unusual thing. When you look at State Boards across the nation, they are given this kind of role, and this gets back to why a State Board was invented in the first place, which is to look with an eye single, to use that ancient language, to the good of education, and that's why we have non-renewable six-year terms, is to keep the thing de-politicized as much as we can. And so I think that there is an obligation for us to speak for those things that aren't being spoken for, and we would follow Kim's vision there in terms of saying, this equity is something that we really need to do because it's right, and if, who else is going to be making that statement unless we do?
Thank you, Bill. Oliver, I think your hand is up.
Yep, sorry, I just wanted to follow up my, my last sort of provocative question with a provocative suggestion perhaps that we think about, and not looking for anyone to sort of answer now, but, you know, we have this, again, speaking, you know, it's kind of the vestiges of the past, where the Commissioner at the time, now Secretary, worked for the Board, and, you know, there was sort of an incomplete divorce, if you will, of the Agency and the Secretary from the Board, and we now have this awkward situation where the, where the Secretary is a, is a non-voting member of the Board, and to some extent, it creates conflicts where the Secretary may have his or her ideas about how to sort of advance the Administration's educational policy, and needs to have the freedom to do that, but is somewhat encumbered by being a member of a Board and conflicted by sort of, potentially too sort of competing, and I use the term "competing" not in a negative way, but in a good way. I think some healthy sort of tension is a good thing, and the Board has a really useful role from an oversight perspective, and it just becomes really cloudy and I think creates, potentially creates unnecessary tension when the Secretary is sort of torn in between sort of two different loyalties, if you will. So just something to think about, you know, as, as we sort of go forward in the next legislative session, I think, you know, to get right down to it, you know, the question I'm posing is, does it make sense for the Secretary to continue to be a member of the Board, or should, should the Secretary effectively be on the other side of the table?
Interesting question. Kim?
I guess I am just going to ask a provoking question maybe of you, Oliver. What are the two different loyalties? I guess, I'm just wondering, are we operating under different visions, the AOE and the State Board of Ed? I know we have different roles and responsibilities in this, but I just wonder if you want to expand on that.
Yeah, I'll give you, I can give you some, just some, some really, a concrete example. It's like, for example, when the Secretary is sort of presenting the Administration's education budget, and it includes, the State Board's budget is sort of included as part of that, you know, the Secretary has a need to sort of represent the Administration's sort of perspective on the budget, but in doing so can sort of inadvertently sort of sidestep the Board, and perhaps the Board may have a different perspective. Another example, I think, is when there are matters before the Legislature, the Board may have one perspective, and the Agency may have a slightly different, or maybe even a completely different, perspective. And there are challenges, I think where the challenges and tension can arise is if the Secretary is a member of the Board and is, before the Legislature, in his or her capacity as the Secretary, representing the Administration's perspective on a particular policy matter, if he or she has not had the opportunity to consult with the State Board, the State Board could justifiably become frustrated that, you know, that a member of their Board was sort of out there, you know, singing from a different hymn sheet. So I think that's, that's the tension that I'm speaking of.
Yeah, it's a legitimate question, and it has happened. The Secretary and I went toe-to-toe before the Senate Committee on many of these issues. And if you were, though, think it through, it's a good question, if however the Secretary were not a member of the Board, that would not actually cause the Board to be independent of the Agency of Education in any appreciable way, since we rely entirely upon employees under the Secretary's direction to, I shouldn't say entirely, when they're, when, when we hire our own attorneys, then we are finally disconnected from any influence or control by the Secretary. But in most cases, we receive very, very valuable and important support from employees who work for the Secretary and whose allegiance is appropriately to him or her. So even if the Secretary were not a member, you're still, the Secretary is still casting a very long shadow as long as the Board does not have its own, its staff that reports to the Board, as, to use the language of statute. I don't know what the answer is, but, but that's just an additional consideration. Bill, your hand is still up, do you have another comment to make?
Yes. Let me throw out a thought to consider, is this maybe a false dichotomy between, and we're making more of a conflict than it needs to be? In other words, is if we have the job of putting together the rules for this, that, and the other, which is passed by the Legislature, that's, that doesn't necessarily conflict with the Secretary? And on the other hand, is that that doesn't keep us from being the visioning agent that is also talked about as well. I think we do need to get stronger in terms of the visioning piece, and I think our authority and power comes from the power of our ideas that we put out, and we just haven't exercised that as much as we should, so maybe this is a fight that doesn't need to happen.
I like that idea. Kim?
I wonder if there are other states with similar odd structures and how, I couldn't imagine not having the insight of the Secretary at our Board meetings and sort of the update on the pulse of what's going on in education. And I don't, and, and being a non-voting member, I think, I continue to feel as though the value that Dan brings to our conversations is important. I know we will often say, what does the Secretary think about that? So I'm just trying to think of what other structures might exist that don't run into those conflicts, and I think that whatever we might learn in that regard maybe provides insight into what makes sense moving forward, because it is, there have been different Secretaries and different Board members, and I think if we are thinking about how we're going to change this, we want to think about how the structure makes most sense, because I think a collaborative approach to supporting education in the state of Vermont is really important, and to share a similar vision to that at the head of the Agency and the head of our Board, moving just collectively as, as the top of the heap in education policy, I think makes sense. I don't know structurally how that represents itself as a Board, though, so I think that's a great pause, Oliver, for us to think about options, but again, I would say, I think we would be ill-stirred to not have Dan and the Secretary of Education representing the work of the Agency of Education in our deliberations and conversations.
No, I, I think that's a great point, and I, I think that they would absolutely, you know, if we were to go down that path, I would still envision that they would have a significant role, much as they do, for example, let's say, before the Senate and House Education, you know, committees, but again, on the other side of the table, so then the Board is, you know, has more of an oversight role and, and the roles, responsibilities are more clearly delineated. Anyway, I just, I threw it out there, it's just, you know, again, blue-sky thinking, you know, it would be interesting, I think your question about looking at what other states do would be, I think, a really good place to start, and I just, we need to be reminded that we do have a, we're living with a bit of a vestige of an incomplete sort of separation, and we need to remind ourselves of that and be thinking about what the right structure really should be.
Angelita, I think I saw your hand up. Do you wish to speak?
I don't believe my hand was ever up.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Mr. Secretary? You're muted, sir?
I was just going to comment on the, you know, in the spirit of just sort of brainstorming on this, I still struggle with the vision piece as much as I think we can think about the regulatory aspects, you know, that we've talked about and the areas where the Board doesn't necessarily add value because those are largely administrative functions, but I think, you know, the piece that really I still struggle with is, is related to the vision piece and who sets the vision, you know? And I think my, my work on a school board, which I know, you know, working with Kim on those issues with the SBA, the school board has that essential responsibility to sort of articulate the ends or the vision for the community, but to the point, you know, part of what we're dealing with is this, this change in direction that the General Assembly has given that has aligned the Commissioner of Education, now the Secretary of Education, has a direct report to the Governor, and the Governor is enacting a larger vision for the state. And that's, you know, that was sort of the central point to me from Act 98, which made that change, is that education is not separate from the larger state vision of whatever that change, is that education is not separate from the larger state vision, whatever that would be. It's, it's essential, and one could argue probably more essential than ever in a knowledge-based economy, that we can't afford to have education policy separate from the larger state policy that we would expect a governor to articulate. So when you, when you start talking about the board's role in vision, this is, for me, what really provokes the conversation around coherence, because we can't have multiple visions. You know, we can't have a governor articulating a state vision and plan, that then gets presented and encapsulated in a budget, and concrete policy proposals and so forth, the General Assembly uses as a starting point in many cases. And to then have a separate vision emanating from the agency, or a separate vision emanating from the state board, or from the legislature itself, frankly. So, you know, when I ponder these things from an intellectual perspective, I'd be okay with the idea that the board, being the visionary entity, if, if the, specifically, if the General Assembly would then defer to that vision, you know? But they often find themselves, and rightfully, in a position of articulating a vision after listening to their views of their constituents, or understanding the broader needs of the state. So it's that issue of vision that really is a, is a major intellectual stumbling block for me around the coherence piece. And I would argue, I could see a role for the board, and what I promoted last year was on addressing some of those future-oriented topics. I think where John did, and I have agreement, is like, someone needs to be looking across the tree line a little bit, beyond a biennium, which the General Assembly is often confined to that two-year cycle, if not the one-year issue. Someone needs to be thinking more broadly, and I think it's useful to have an entity independently doing that. But in terms of the vision, for me, as someone who works inside of an administrative role, it's important to have a concrete vision that's, in our case, I think, in education, directly driven by our constitution, and enacted through law. The Supreme Court has clarified the boundaries on, you know, that commitment to equity and equality is essentially our vision. We don't need to be spending a lot of time out there roaming around the landscape, having multiple folks involved in vision. Our challenge in Vermont is to get coherence, and to, to, to make sure that the systems that we have, including regulation, are achieving, achieving that vision.
Peter, can I just chime in quickly?
Yeah, Peter.
I think this is a really healthy discussion, and what Dan just said about the purpose of 98 was, as he stated, was to, to have a single, single, uh, focus and, and control of the delivery of public education in the state. So this is healthy, I think this, we should continue with this, but, and work it out. But I concur what, with Dan in regards to why we enacted 98. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Yeah, I, this, this has been a very good discussion, it's, Jenna.
Yeah, I just want to echo what Peter said, it was helpful for Dan to frame that in terms of Act 98, and kind of, you know, how do we have, how does, how does this board feed into one plan? You know, it doesn't make sense, really, right? Like, to have multiple, every agency to have a different plan, right? There's a plan, and how do we support that plan? What does that look like? So I appreciate that, thank you.
Just a sec, Kim, I would, thank you, Jenna. I guess I would take issue with your sentence, Dan, that you can't have multiple visions. Maybe it depends on what you mean by vision. If you're talking about big picture, over-the-horizon visions, which is what I think the board ought to be looking at, I think it's fine to have multiple visions, and they should compete with one another, and people who are actually choosing actions, that is, executive agencies like yours, or the governor, or the legislature, can be informed by the competition between different visions. I mean, I'll take a simple example. One vision for the governance of education in Vermont is that it remain decentralized and highly variable. Another vision is, I think, yours, which is that it become highly centralized. Those are two alternate visions, which, you know, steel sharpens steel. I believe there's a real great value in the articulation of competing visions. Ultimately, it's up to the governor and, and his cabinet to make decisions, and the legislature to, to make policy decisions that take us one way or the other. So I, I think that the idea of an independent entity that knows nothing about administration, and no, and has no authority over administration, articulating a kind of over-the-horizon vision for the state is, is very valuable. It's worth remembering that we do not serve at the governor's pleasure, whereas you do. We are remarkably independent of that. We can be removed for cause, but the, the, the language about that's very limited. And so we do have the freedom to think boldly and independently, and I concur, we don't do enough of that, and we ought to do more. It's one of the reasons I was pushing that legislation so hard, was to get us out of the administrative oversight that was eating up a lot of our time. There's a, there's a powerful sentence, that the routine drives up the non-routine. Visionary thinking is non-routine, and if you have a lot of routine stuff, you don't get time for. Anyway, so I just wanted to just sort of suggest that there, there's a place for healthy competition of visions. Ultimately, the people with the authority to act, i.e. the secretary and the governor, are the ones who need to make the choice. But I can see a role for this board as an independent entity to come up with and make its case for whatever it makes sense to the board, without reference to whether, whether the governor or the secretary thinks it's a good idea. And because ultimately, you have the authority, as secretary, to do as you damn well please, or as the legislature or governor directs you. But certainly, you don't have to do anything we tell you to do, as we all, I think, understand very clearly. So Jennifer Sanderson?
Yeah, I've, I've been listening to this, and this has been, I think, a very insightful conversation that we're having. I guess my perspective is, conceptually, I like the independence that a state board of education brings to the table, because I think we're not constrained in a way that maybe the agency would be. But at the same time, I would want to, you know, ensure that the vision that we are sort of designing is relevant and practical. And then it kind of gets back into, you know, we are relying upon the secretary to provide us with the information to, we're not necessarily chasing down our own information to make these decisions. And so I think, conceptually, I think it makes sense for us to, you know, have this greater, more extensive view. But if that were to be the case, I think there need to be resources behind us to allow us to do that.
Okay.
Which gets back to, you know, delineating the different roles, and ensuring that it is very clear, you know, where we're separate, and how we are going to be able to enact, or, you know, to, to gather the information that would help us to have an informed decision about things.
Great. Now, the staffing, independent staffing issue is dicey.
Quick commentary, just a mic. It's very, it's rich irony, is that, that the, the board is as good as the governor's appointees. We have a very strong board as a, as a result of who the governor has appointed. But it wasn't long ago where that wasn't the case. So I, this is, this is rich with irony in regards to, you know, who's connected to who, who's, you know, how, how this is all transpiring, so comment only.
Thank you, Peter. Kim, and then I think we might wrap. Go ahead, Kim.
Thank you. I was thinking that the importance of this work is that we are independent, and that the, the strategy that an administration would employ to achieve the outcomes for education, I feel like the outcomes for education that Vermonters are seeking are, you know, what will our kids know and be able to do when they're done with our pre-K through 12, pre-K through 16? And that's the broad vision that we could articulate, and maybe point to certain things that we think might indicate that, and then, but the, how you go about doing that is an administrative function. And so, so that's, I guess, Dan, where I was talking about vision, that it would be outcome-based, and that that would not necessarily be at the political ebb and flow of whomever is sitting in the governor's office, it would be more a reflection of the values of Vermonters. And that how you go about that is always going to be, I think, driven in the way that it is constructed now, by the governor's office, through you, to how it's implemented. So I don't see those in conflict with one another, and I would just challenge us to make the case for our need for an independent support and staff by finding our way out of regulatory transactions, and into broader deeper thinking on outcome-based visionary-type stuff, so that we make our own case for it.
Thank you, Kim. I think it's been, as many of you said, this has been a very rich discussion, with a lot of really valuable dimensions. I know I'm gonna go back and listen to the tape of this, just because it's, it's been very exciting, and a lot to, a lot to try to make sense of. If any of you wish to frame up, you know, this doesn't, this is sort of not ready for legislative agenda stuff, since, but, but if you wanna, if any of you want to sort of try to pull together what you've heard here, I'd be very grateful to have that from you again, early January. I'm not sure for myself yet, there's a lot to onboard here, precisely where to go with this and how to move forward, but let's, let's plan on, on that. I would like, at this point, it's 1:05, I think, I think we could take a break here, and come back, if you will, at quarter of two, 1:45. We'll have 15 minutes to talk about the next several meetings and what's ahead, our usual work plan discussion, and then at 2 o'clock sharp, we make ourselves available to the public for the public comment period. And my hope is that as many of you as possible will stay on for that, partly, quite simply, out of courtesy to the public who wishes to comment. And actually, that's probably the main reason. But also, by the way, there's some, at least for me, who doesn't know much about this stuff, very, very enlightening stuff that's been said to us. So with that said, if you're all okay with it, it's, it's 1:05 now, yeah, 1:05. Let's be back here at 1:45. Please remember to mute and to turn off your video. Thank you all. Good. So we're, we are at item L, and we have about 12 minutes, sort of work plan and agenda. As Peter mentioned earlier, he and I have been talking about doing an update kind of of, of what's happening in our schools, and inviting some folks in to, to brief us on that. Now, you'll recall that on two occasions, I apologize, I don't remember the months, maybe October and maybe August, we had Jay Nichols and Jeff Francis, and a few others from, and we also had some, some superintendents and principals. And, and those folks, I, I think, are valuable to us, because they're, especially the principals, are pretty close to what's happening. But I wondered if maybe what Peter was saying, Peter, are you with us? Yeah, I see you there.
Yes.
Were you saying, Peter, that you visualized that we would have students speaking to us? Or?
Not necessarily. This all, this all occurred, just briefly, I've been close friends with Tim Donovan for a while, and he's on the, on the board of the McClure Foundation. And the McClure Foundation offered a one-time grant to all high school graduates, a free course at CCV. And when I talked to Carolyn Weir, who was Executive Director of, of McClure Foundation, I found it very interesting that the county that had the most response to that, that offer was Orleans County. Now, Orleans County, if anybody knows, is not, not the, not the Gold Coast, but it, I think, was a clear indication that, that there was a, a need for those kids that, that would not have ordinarily had that opportunity to seek a free CCV course. And I think it's gone beyond that, in terms of what they've been monitoring in response to the students and whatnot. So I was just, I talked to her, and, you know, just, it just sort of, I'd love to have an idea of what's going on, you know, such as initiatives, or what's happening in this uncertain times, that's, that's, that's most benefiting our students. So it would, that was, other than talking to Carolyn, and I was gonna bring her in individually, but when I talked to John about it, he said, well, let's make this a bigger, bigger venue, or, you know, offering, in terms of a wider, wider, wider participants. So that's where we left off, and I'd be more than willing to hear from anybody that might be able to, to suggest other, other, other people to come in. So that's, 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 that's what all precipitated, this, this.
Thank you, Peter. So I guess the question, board, is, do you feel that it would be useful for us to convene another one of these sort of listening sessions, in which we hear from a reasonably diverse array of people close to what's happening in our schools? That could mean principals, it could mean teachers, it could mean students, it could mean somebody like the, the woman from the McClure Foundation. Peter, as long as, as long as she has really kind of vivid information for us, I mean, she's a bit removed, she's not a student, but I, I would want to have people who can tell us, even if their world is somewhat narrow, tell us what it's like in their world. I mean, when we hear from our students what's happening at their school, that's just very vivid and very powerful. Admittedly, it's just a sample, and, and our two students come from quite different schools, but still, it's very rich for us to hear real-life stories, as opposed to broad generalities, which has their place as well. So, board members, I guess my questions to you are, is it worth spending, I would say, two hours of the board's time at the January meeting? And keeping in mind that we have other work to do, including, by the way, January and February meetings, do keep in mind that we have our implicit bias training. And I think, Kim, if you, are you with us, Kim? Yeah, that's, is that a two-hour session?
Yes, I believe it was two, two-hour sessions. I'm pretty sure.
So two hours is, is going to be devoted to the implicit bias training. I had thought, well, we can talk about that. We'll certainly need to spend at least an hour, and possibly two, with Kim and her committee, trying to get through to some conclusions about 132360. We'll probably want to hear from the 2220 Committee on their first pass at priorities, and sort of easy pickings and all of that. That's just for starters. So if we could fit in an hour or two... So if we could fit in an hour or two, would it be worth having kind of a briefing from the front lines, as it were? And if so, who, who, who comes to mind to invite? I remember we had, um, Jennifer Batzajorins and some other principals, um, and, and superintendents speak to us. That was, I thought, very, very interesting. What are your thoughts? Kim, uh, Jen, Jenna, Jenna, you, Jenna?
Kim, Kim can go first. I think I kind of cut her off. I was going to jump in. But I do have something to say, but I'll let Kim go first.
No, that's okay. And I, Sabina's hand as well. I just want to make sure you can see them all jump. But that wasn't, I did have, I guess my, my question, I guess, that is to what end? So what we gather to be used for what purpose? Because I am acutely aware of how challenged for time all of the people we might be considering convening are. Um, so if, I guess, I think we would want to know that we might be doing something with the information. Whereas separately, I think I would be very interested in understanding the results of the McClure Foundation's investment in the one free class for CCFC classes for all Vermont students. And no, I, I, that's awesome information to know where it was concentrated in terms of its use because it was remote. So otherwise, would those students in Orleans have had access to a community college up at their location? There, there's so much interesting information to understand about that, that sort of initiative, that if there were other such initiatives versus anecdotal, um, stories from the field, which I'm not sure what we do with it, versus this broader sort of thinking into the future, what could education look like for currently enrolled students and those graduating if we're partnering pre-K 16? So that seems more big picture that I think does help inform maybe things we might lean into.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, Jenna?
Oh, I, are you still looking for a suggestion? I think Kim has good feedback, but I-
Any thoughts, any thoughts you have?
Yeah, no, I, I, I have a suggestion of a person. That's what I was, I was thinking about, um, who's specifically from Orleans County that would speak to, um, could speak to that collaboration that they have, which is strong between the high school and, or and all community school-aged children. Um, it's Samantha Stevens. She's Equity Officer at North, for North Country Supervisory Union. And, and she could speak to the, the state of the district, which is a very large district.
Right.
Geographically, expansive.
Right, right. Other thoughts, others? I mean, should we convene a discussion like this? And if so, what should it be its nature? I'm hearing Kim saying, "To what end?" That's a great question. You know, why are we doing that? And it always gets to be, well, would we do, take any action as a result? And there's not, that, that's always sort of a tough question. We're not, we're not an executive entity that can just go off and do what it wants. Jennifer Samson?
Yeah, um, it's, I had the same question that Kim did about to what end. Um, and I guess you can't really answer that question if you don't know the information. Um, I'm also aware of the fact that many of the people, I'm trying to remember if it was the September Board meeting where we had many people come and speak, um, just about the pandemic and the responses. They're probably still in deep in dealing with all of these things, but maybe it would be worth sending out an email to everyone who had appeared before just to say, "If you have an update that you'd like to share with us, please feel free, um, you know, no pressure. But if, if there's anything you think we should know, um, we're happy to hear about it at our January meeting."
Yep, yep. We had, we had two, two sessions and I think a total of about 10 people. Jenna, yes?
Yeah, I think that's a great idea to kind of circle back to folks to see if they want to participate and then maybe kind of thinking about how to round out that conversation, um, with other, other people that have kind of, like, John, your original thought was, you know, do we know other voices from the field? Are there people that are kind of the lead in their educational communities with this work that maybe have a different, different role in the school than, than the people that we heard from before? But I think it would be, make for a rich conversation.
And I guess, uh, maybe, you know, I, I, I remember back in the autumn and summer, I at least and some others, I think, wanted to be thinking about, so what does this mean for the future and what, what can we learn from this and how should education look different? But at that time, everybody was under so much pressure to just get through the week that there really was no bandwidth for thinking, three years hence, how do we incorporate what we've learned from this? I mean, for example, we know that adolescent students do better if they don't have to get up at 6:15 in the morning and start classes at eight in the morning. We know that the adolescent body works on a different time clock than, than do others. And our present system allows some of that, um, that in a way that it never did before. How do we, is there a way that we could change this, the time schedule for high school students from now on? But nobody, in fairness, nobody had any bandwidth to be thinking about three years hence. They could barely figure out what's going to happen in three days. Maybe, maybe to, back to Kim's question, to what end? We could invite these people to come speak and the question that could be on our minds, if not theirs, and might be, some of the questions we ask are, might be, so what about the way we're doing things now might be worth continuing to do or modify? What are we learning from this that could make education even better when things return to normal? I don't know. Dan, you're closer to this than, than certainly I am. Do you think there's any appetite for those kind of conversations at this time?
Yeah, I, I think there is, uh, a lot of appetite to think about the future, but, you know, here too, again, I think we're focused on a very, uh, specific moment in time relative to COVID. And I think it's, it's been a challenge, um, for all of us that are either directly involved in designing the, the policies or regulations, guidance to be safe during COVID, while at the same time acknowledging that there's probably opportunity here, as you pointed to, the use of time. So we want to make sure that whatever we're doing in this next phase could help the system evolve to be more responsive to the needs of kids. Um, but, you know, it's hard, it's hard to carve out the bandwidth to have that conversation.
Yeah.
It's one of the reasons we created that, you know, the group, um, early on to sort of, it was a secretary's advisory group, just to sort of stand aside and, and they, they did a good job. They produced a report in September 1, but it's really hard for us to find the space to even take a look at what they wrote and incorporate it back into our design. So it's, it's a tough moment, more than usual, I would argue.
Yeah, yeah. Sabina, you had a comment?
Yeah, I think, you know, back at the, was it the September meeting where we had, um, the folks come in and kind of talk about what was going on? It was kind of cool to see it from a different perspective because, you know, obviously the student, I'm on the receiving end, but to see how the people who are administering it and how they're dealing with it and the challenges they're facing. And that was really interesting. And I don't know, like, you know, inviting them back if they have any updated things of like, we figured out this kink in the system and now all of a sudden, you know, kids, all of our kids have access to internet because whatever happened. And that would be kind of interesting to, to hear. I also think, um, definitely having a conversation about, you know, can we take, you know, the fact that now teachers have been forced to become literate in online platforms and using Google Classroom and maybe providing, you know, so if a kid is just struggling and like, I just can't get out of bed this morning, can we make sure that there's a good enough online platform that they can do school from home for one day, if need be, or they're sick or snow day happens? And so, you know, things like that, like maybe we won't have to approve the snow days anymore, you know, still have them. But, you know, I think that is another great conversation. What, what can we take away from this? Because we've also learned, kids can't be at home, you know, five days a week.
Not all kids, that's for sure.
That's the reality of it. But we've also learned a lot of good things from it, too, I'm sure. And so if people do have that bandwidth, who knows? And to have that conversation, it definitely would be a really interesting conversation to have.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Sabina. Jenna and Jennifer, just hang on. I want to check in with Suzanne. Suzanne, it's time for our public comment period to begin. Is there, are there folks standing by who wish to be heard?
Um, John, there are people on the line. I am not certain if they wish to be heard. I am aware of one person that signed up with me. Um, she was unfortunately called to an all-staff meeting, so she will be late. And she's hoping that she's going to be able to make it by the three o'clock cutoff time, but she did supply me with written testimony. And additionally, I've received another piece of written testimony. So, um, you may want to just reach out to the people on the line.
All righty. Um, those of you who are joining us by phone, um, if any of you wish to, um, speak to the Board during this public comment period, um, we would be happy to hear you. So I think if you can text, Susan, I see you there. So Susan Aronoff would like to speak. Um, are there any others, uh, standing by who would like to be heard?
Um, this is Karen Price from the Vermont Family Network. I'm not planning to speak, but I, I'm just on in case anyone has questions about the survey that, um, because I had provided public comment in April.
Yes.
But if any, yes, any of you have questions about the survey that I sent in, um, but that's why I'm on. So I'll just stay on if you have anything to ask me.
Thank you, Ms. Price. Um, is there anybody else who would like to be recognized or maybe to speak? All right.
I'm not sure if you can hear me?
Yes, I can.
Um, my name is Brienne Walsh and I'm here from the Vermont Association of School Psychologists. And I'm just listening in to see, um, what comes up during public comments. Our association is looking to make a statement, so we are here as well.
So you would like to speak? Very good. Um, thank you. And is there anyone else? We're just trying to survey to how many folks we have to speak so we know how much time we have to work with. Um, anyone else who might wish to speak? Well, it's reasonable to expect that there may be some more folks who will join the call midway through, so we want to allow time for that. Before we begin that, Board, um, we'll probably have a little bit more time to come back to the topic that we've been discussing. Jennifer and Jenna, certainly Jennifer, you still have your hand up, um, and we'll want to, um, maybe, are you both done? Your hand just went down, Jennifer. Yeah, it's up. Okay.
Quickly, maybe instead of trying to think about this in January, maybe this should be something more in the spring where we can have a bit more of a retrospective, you know, hopefully we'll be out of the pandemic by then and can start thinking about, you know, what worked that would be helpful for the future.
Yeah.
Interesting thing is, is that remote learning hasn't been awful for every student and in some ways been better for some students. And I think that's something to consider.
Yeah, there's some merit to that. I think come January, people will just still be up to here with it. I think come perhaps March, April, the horizon might be a little bit longer for folks and they might start to see where we're going to get to someday. Uh, perhaps we could, um, nonetheless invite the representative from, um, McClure to give us a briefing on their experience with this, just as a single item, not as part of a large conversation. Uh, and that would be 20 to 30 minutes max, uh, just as a, uh, item of information. Would that be of interest to folks in the January meeting? I'm not seeing a lot of mad enthusiasm. Um, I know it's hard to say no. Um, then, then let us, uh, Peter, you could, yeah, Kim?
I would just, um, if it, if they are able to bring us perspective on the intersection of what this means for the future and the success of it in the past, um, I think that's interesting. Or, um, letting them know that we're looking at this through a broader lens and would love for them to join us in the spring. So I guess just the data they could send us, but if it's part of a bigger vision for what they're doing in partnership with, um, pre-K 16, then I think that's interesting for us to know in thinking about our vision and our roles and responsibilities around education. So that might inform that. But otherwise, I think the spring would be awesome. Thank you.
All right. Peter, you, you-
Very quickly, um, the McClure Foundation, along with the Roland Foundation, the Tarrant Foundation, the Permanent Fund are, are, are all funds that are directly, um, looking, are, are, uh, focusing on education. And when I was in the legislature, it's very interesting to see how sometimes they are more effective in terms of, 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 of making change, good change, rather than going through the whole legislative process. Now, that's just a sidebar, but, but I think the McClure Foundation, particularly in regards to how they responded to the pandemic situation, right at hand is an example, and it may be just worth listening. They're, you know, they're, they're very good people and they're very, very committed to, uh, to the improvement or the delivery of education.
All right. Thank you, Peter. Uh, Sabina, you had a comment?
I just think that, you know, um, someone made a good point that like, right now, people would still be kind of up over their heads, but looking towards the end of the school year and having, setting aside a good chunk at one of those meetings of what have we learned from, you know, teaching and learning in a pandemic? I think that, that could be a really beneficial conversation for us to facilitate as a Board and to invite people to come and speak to us, kind of like we did with proficiency-based learning, where we allowed people to, to kind of speak about what it was. And, and I think people across the state were able to kind of use that information that we collected.
Yeah, yeah, agreed. Good conversation, team.
I guess I say quickly, very selfishly, uh, this might be my swan song because, as you know, Bill and I are up in February. So just bear in mind that we won't be around in the spring or early summer or whatever. I just put that out selfishly for, for, um...
Okay. You are heard, sir. I'm choking up. The last of the old guys. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Um, let us now go on to the public hearing. I'm sorry to keep Susan and others, um, hanging for just a bit, but, um, Susan, let's, let's say, um, you can take about six minutes, if you would. Each of you speakers plan on about six minutes. Um, and, um, we'll go from there. So Susan Aronoff, you're-
Hey, hi, um, good afternoon. My name is Susan Aronoff and I am the Policy Analyst for the Vermont Developmental Disabilities Council. And I'm going to use part of my six minutes just to let you know what the Developmental Disabilities Council is because while I often attend your meetings when they're in person and sit in the back and, you know, online, I'm always trying to like get the link and follow what's going on, uh, we don't often speak. So the Developmental Disabilities Council is, um, was created under a federal law, the Federal Developmental Disabilities Act, known as the DD Act. Every state and territory has one. And we exist primarily to give people with disabilities and their family members access to the systems of government that impact their lives. So that could be the educational system, the healthcare system, the park system, wherever people live, work, learn, play, um, get healthcare. Um, if they're living with a developmental disability in Vermont and, and by the federal definition, that's about 85,000 Vermonters, um, then we're here to sort of assist them and, and try to speak, um, for their interests and concerns. And, um, so along those lines, I want to talk with you about the special education rules. But a lot of what we at the council do is empower, um, people with disabilities and their family members to access these systems and speak for themselves. And so I just want to point out that you've been hearing from a lot of people who've gone through, um, the Developmental Disabilities runs a leadership training. Uh, we do that every year with Vermont Family Network and also Green Mountain Self-Advisory- We do that every year with Vermont Family Network and also Green Mountain Self-Aid Kids. And we've graduated well over 100 leaders in Vermont. And a lot of those leaders have gone on to serve on the Special Education Advisory Panel and on other boards and organizations. And you've heard some testimony from some already, and you'll be hearing testimony from more. And I just really want to encourage you to listen, listen, listen to the parent voice. And we're trying to get some students with disabilities to testify and submit testimony by December 30th, too. We're still working on that. But really, I think the lived experience is so important. And I want to thank you for holding open this process till December 30th. It's been hard for, for everyone with COVID. But I think you guys can imagine that for parents of students with disabilities who've had to go from just being parents of students with disabilities, that's hard enough. But to become the speech-language pathologist, to become the special educator, to be home, to also be trying to do their jobs, and, you know, many of them have not just one kid, but multiple kids. So we know this has been a hard time. And for parents to understand what's going on and take the time to reach out and participate and show up at one of these meetings and figure out how to call in or dial in, kudos to the ones who can do that. And thank you for making the process accessible to them and holding it open to the 30th. I will be submitting written comments. The areas that the council's most concerned about are adverse effect. You're going to be, you've heard a lot about that. And parental consent. And we, I love Chairman Carroll, what you said early this morning about be open to changing business as usual. We know change is hard. We know particularly in the parental consent area that LEAs and districts and other special ed administrators have good reason to not want to change a lot right now, because everything's so uncertain. Let's stick with, you know, the way things, the way we've been doing things. But I would say particularly in the area of adverse effect and the area of parental consent, the way we've been doing things is not working for a lot of people. It's not working for the parents who, no matter what, they're going to have students with disabilities from K through 12, pre-K. And they need a system and a process that they can participate in and understand and be able to say yes to this part and no to that part, and we'd like something else. And that parental engagement is so key. So I hope you, I'll be putting that in writing, but I hope you take those parts seriously and also adverse effect. And along those lines, I really want to thank, I want to thank Kim and Suzanne, the people. You guys have been working so hard to have a subcommittee and to have extra lawyer time and to really understand the comments and focus in. And I know you scheduled another session for January. We're very encouraged that there was some movement on the part of the special ed councils. And I think that movement was really a tribute to the process you've been having of meetings and consensus and, you know, to really trying to bring people together. So kudos for all the work, and I will put something in writing. And stay well and stay safe. Thanks for considering our comments.
Thank you, Susan. Nice to see you.
Oh, and extra thanks, I see Secretary French there. Really, the agency staffing on this, Emily Simmons and the other staff people that you've dedicated this rule process, this rulemaking process, whether they're staffing the Special Ed Advisory Committee or the Act 173 Committee, whichever committees they're showing up at and staffing. Oh, my God, they are phenomenal and could not be better and more on top of things.
That's so nice. That's so nice to hear. Thank you, Susan. So who would like to go next? Ms. Price or Ms. Walsh? Do you wish to speak now?
Yes. This is Ms. Walsh. Go ahead.
Go ahead, Ms. Walsh. We'll, we'll come back to you, Karen.
I don't necessarily have a comment at this time. I'm just listening in for the Vermont School Psychologist to, as we're crafting our own statement collectively. I wasn't able to attend earlier just because I'm, I'm working right now. But I'll just be listening in right now. Thank you.
Good. Maybe you could, if I may, I want to ask a question of Kim and Jenna and Elida and Bill. In, in some of the testimony that we have received, there was comment, this is in connection with the school psychologists. I was, I was struck by how frequently a learning disability manifests itself in behavioral issues. And I guess you could call even psychological issues. And I was interested in the comments of several people about dyslexia. And one person, if I recall, said that dyslexia ought to be the fourth kind of thematic area that we're looking at. I don't know if I have that right, or is it more perhaps reading ability, which Dan, I know you're very, you and the agency have really begun to focus upon that. But, so this is a question to Kim and the committee. Is, is dyslexia kind of a special thing that we're not providing adequate screening for? One person suggested that there needed to be legislation about it. What is your thought on that? Is that?
I think we've heard quite a bit from that community of parents and families. And I believe it falls under specific learning disability. Am I getting that right, Dan? As a layperson, I'm really trying hard to understand the pockets of where this is approached. And I believe dyslexia is approached through specific learning disability, which there are a number of things under there.
Yeah, I think, you know, just to the point, it's, from a special ed perspective, it has to conform with the, one of the first understandings that it has to be a disability. And to what extent dyslexia is identified as a disability under special ed laws, sort of the debate. And it generally is categorized under some other category, such as specific learning disability doesn't stand alone necessarily as its own. So that's part of the challenge from a special ed perspective.
So is there, is there some rulemaking change? I know this isn't, but I'm sure the people who are in the public hearing with us don't mind overhearing this conversation. The question I have then is, there are change that needs to be made in the rules to address what Dan was just describing and what we're hearing from people about. It seemed like there were several instances of where a child with a reading problem didn't get diagnosed as dyslexic until they were in the seventh or eighth grade. And even then, it was only forced by behavioral issues that had arisen from the enormous frustration that the child had been experiencing. So are you thinking that there's some language? Have you heard Language Committee that you think needs to be brought forward that addresses this? Or is it? Jenna, you have a thought?
Yeah, so John, I'm glad you said that. I was, I found it interesting that we heard from so many parents with issues around dyslexia and their children and the services and the process. In my personal experience, in 20 years in education or more at this point, very, I don't really know if I worked with any kids with dyslexia, which I, I think it's underdiagnosed, and I'm not sure around the process or what can be put into place. So I'm curious to ask more questions when we meet in January of that smaller committee and have subsequent recommendations to take forward. I don't know, Kim, if you had any thoughts, but I, it was interesting that that many parents had very specific concerns.
And it's kind of a compound problem in the sense that it's, I don't know if it's fair to say it's genetic, but it's not uncommon to be in multiple generations in a family. And so that can affect how much we're hearing about it. Because people who are adults now, who've been dyslexic most of their life and perhaps not treated, may find themselves at a disadvantage to communicate either orally or in writing to this board. So it's, that seems to compound the risk that we're not attending adequately to the question. But I don't even know what the question is. I guess I, I just, so I guess I would just leave it that I would ask you folks to just think that one through and decide for yourselves, you're, you're better informed than the rest of us, whether you feel there needs to be some remedial language that strengthens the state's ability to respond kind of more effectively to the, the kind of stories we've heard about.
I wonder, John, and I, I could not speak to that with any expertise whatsoever, except to understand how that, among other disabilities, fits within, how students are being identified and then, and then how their needs are being met through the education system. But I think I am also hearing about it in my other hat on our local school board and early screening and understanding the impact of that. So I think that that is well-aligned with whatever work might be happening around literacy by third-grade goals and literacy initiatives happening in the state as well. So I, I think that those are not mutually exclusive, and I think we want to consider dyslexia in the context of all the disabilities that are being addressed with this rule. But I'm hopeful that some of the work I'm seeing happening in our local district is following the science and the better practice of early identification and hopefully seeing that more broadly across the state would be ideal. And I don't know if that's a practice or a rule matter.
Yeah, just, I guess I would just, I keep thinking about what Marilyn was saying, that rules are the most powerful tool we have, short of language and statute.
I think Krista's hand, I was just going to say, Dan, Dan, I'm sure has some thoughts, but I just wanted to, Krista had come to our committee meetings and is, I want to get this right, Krista, both a parent and an educator. So just, I see for hands, she may have more to lend to this than I really can.
And John, that is the educator who signed up to speak publicly during this timeframe.
So Krista, welcome. We have maybe one or two other people to hear from, and then you'll be next. I just want to invite Secretary French to respond to the conversation we've just been having.
Yeah, just to the point to Marilyn's observation about the importance of regulation. I think stylistically, one of the things we're trying to achieve with 1300 is again, to have the regulation conform to the law and not necessarily go outside of that reservation. And so it's important, I think, to maintain that discipline. And one of the criticisms Marilyn and others had of our prior regulations is they went beyond what the law required, which is always, I think, a temptation when creating regulation, because the charge of regulation is to consider the landscape in your particular state and to figure out what's necessary actually to get the law implemented as intended. But I think it's in this case, I would recommend dyslexia, because it isn't nationally well-conceived as part of the special ed process. Our approach has been in the literacy reform, which I believe we'll bring forward next year again as a policy initiative, is to address literacy through sort of the screening approach that Kim mentioned, not necessarily through special ed, but through statutory requirement for districts to address literacy and to screen for dyslexia early on.
Hmm, okay. So Karen Price, do you wish to speak at this time?
Only to say again that I'm not here to offer public comment, that I have done that, but only to answer questions around the survey that we had sent to you. And as Susan Aronoff had pointed out, advocates like our organization, DDC, Protection Advocacy, we were hoping that having you keep the public comment period until the end of the year, because we thought perhaps the pandemic would be, you know, over, would give parents opportunity to show up and be a little more active in this process. But given that things haven't improved with, with the pandemic, that we put out the survey as a federally designated parent center in Vermont to try to get those parents' voices to the table. So while there were some professionals who also participated in the survey, which is absolutely fine, which is why you had the breakout, that was our, you know, our work to try to get family voices to the table. So again, any questions you have regarding that survey, I'm here to answer, but that, I'm not providing any, any other comment at this time.
Thank you. We'd like to hear from you, Krista, but before we do, something that was just said reminds me, and this is, I see Emily Simmons is with us, and I'm glad you are, Emily. Welcome aboard. Maybe you have a comment about this. Reading Act 112 of 2020, which is the law passed in June that extended the deadlines for the Rule 2200 changes and the extended the deadline for implementation of the 1300 and 2360 changes by one year. There's a, there's a section in that law that also says that the date for the board to initiate changes to 1300 and 2360 has been moved to the, to August of this year. Now, we, we initiated the changes to the rules, you'll recall, in March. We actually proposed the rules and then began the APA process. That's the initiation in, in, in March and April. And of course, had we not extended the public comment period, that rule would have been adopted already and made law by now. But, not made law, but made effective. It is, and Emily, I think this is a question for you. Is it conceivable that, there's so much going on here, and everybody's under a lot of time pressure, and I'm, I'm just sort of feeling like there are so many strands that we're trying to pull together. I'm a little worried that because of the time pressure, that is, by February at the latest, we would have to complete this board, the board would have to adopt these new, these changes in order to stay on schedule with this APA process that we have started. Is it not conceivable that, and this may be just a horrible idea, is it not conceivable that we could restart this entire process? Because the statute gives us a new start date if we want. That's a question.
That's a lot to ask a person on the spot.
And it's a crazy idea, but if.
We can, we can inquire with the Secretary of State's Office of Rulemaking if that's a question that you want us to research. I don't know, I've never researched that question.
Well, it's a question I'm really putting to the committee and for that matter, well, really to the committee. If you felt that you're, you keep stepping on these mines and new stuff keeps coming at you, or the controversies are really tough, and you're going to have to sort of divide the baby. And that you're, and if you were feeling really rushed and if you were feeling like, we just can't do this right by February, then there may be, and the idea of starting all over again, of course, is probably very troubling. But we wouldn't start over again. We would just, we would just take all that we've done and, and start a new train with it. And it would give us more time to get it right. But I mean, I'm not advocating for this, but I am just exposing that I believe that there might be a possibility that we have that ability either to get the, our present APA process slowed down so that we have more time before we go back to them or essentially abandon this process and roll it over to a new process.
Can I clarify?
Can I clarify, John? The deadline to get the final draft to, is it LCAR that it goes to next? What is that deadline?
Well, it's, maybe Emily can best explain how we came to that.
Sure, so I think what the chair was going to say is there's not a hard and fast deadline. And that's mostly because of the special circumstances of this rulemaking, totally related to the delay in the act while you're in the middle of rulemaking. So if this were normal, cut and dried rulemaking, you'd be subject to an eight-month total time limit. And the, I believe it's LCAR, if I'm remembering correctly, John, can grant you an extension and frequently does grant extensions. We haven't sought one recently that I'm aware of for the state board, so it does feel like a gamble. But all the concerns about timing are related to a general eight-month total time for rulemaking. You're beyond that, obviously, because of the extension of public comment. But when I worked with the chair to lay out timelines from here on forward, we just told the eight months were the extended public comment months and then started counting the eight months again at the conclusion of public comment.
And that was, that was about six months, right? It's the first.
We added six months.
End of June and we added six months to the public comment period.
It legitimately could be a 14-month process. Eight plus the six.
And did we start, when did, when did we officially start early, right?
So that means, where our target is June. The timeline that we have is to, is to have the rule become final in June. That would be eight months plus six months from when we started. But as Emily's suggesting, it might be possible to seek more time by going to LCAR or Secretary of State in the existing process, which seems to me to be much the, if we need more time, I'd much rather get an extension on our existing process than to abandon it and start over again because of what Act 112 permits us to do.
I think, I guess, and my initial reaction to that is the, the biggest question I have is how to address, if we were interested in addressing MTSS as a separate rule. There's no, there is only the Vermont Legal Aid, I think, short draft that hadn't really been considered in, in all state colder arenas. And I don't even, I'm not even sure that I recall that the AOE like commented on it. So it doesn't exist as a separate rule right now. And I just am not sure if we were to suggest that it should, how that comes to be. Is it separate and distinct from this? Because I feel like the other two components, and please speak up Bill and Jenna if you feel differently, the other two components feel like there's been a lot of public comment on it, a lot of feedback on it. It's going to be challenged to approach it, but I don't know that that challenge gets any easier changes or there's that much more to have heard about it. So on those two areas, I feel as though we are probably going to inform ourselves the best we can to make the best decision we can. I don't think there's going to be any new information that's going to come in the law or in federal law. If we were to see that happening with a change in secretary at the federal level or to know that there was something new coming in special ed federal regulation, I think that would delay, but I think short of that, those other two areas seem to have done the due diligence and gathering information and will arrive at a decision in adequate time on that. I think the bigger question around MTSS is whether maybe it could run a parallel path with independent schools, like, you know, it, it seems to be if it's going to be its own rule, it's not a special ed rule. And maybe, I don't know what process that would, would happen on.
Yeah, yeah.
That's my initial thinking on that. We may find something different in January if the, the commentary coming in at the end of this year or the meeting early in January finds us at odds of being able to arrive at a recommendation. I might feel differently then, I don't know that I could say that right now.
So Secretary French, if there were to be a separate rule for MTSS, which is what I understand has been advocated, it would not be part of either 1300 or 2360, it would be part of what other rule?
Yeah, we'd have to, you know, consider that internally and then provide some feedback to. I'm, I'm not comfortable just orally saying it on the spot, but if that's something the board would like us to do, we'll happy to provide you an opinion on how to approach that.
So I think we probably would like to ask you to address that and communicate that at your earliest opportunity directly to the committee, please, so that they can know. I would presume that if it's a separate rule, we have to open a separate rule. And we can do that, but it's a, it's, it's not, it's going to be another train on another track.
And I guess the question, John, is similar to 1300 coming as a funding, brand-new rule sort of driven by 173. I don't know how they come up with numbers for rules, so it might not figure out where it falls under the ed quality standards.
Right.
I don't know.
Oh, and it doesn't matter for us to.
But we don't know that, yeah.
Right, all that matters is that it's not 1300, 2360, or 2220. Which means, those are the only rules that are open right now. We, however, can open a new, any rule at any time for any reason. And so it's probable that, the secretary will advise, but it's probable that the MTSS, if it's not part of 1300 or 2360, and it certainly wouldn't be part of 2200, then would have to be a new rule, which would go through its own process on its own track and its own timetable. But I think we'd need to understand that. I'm gonna, I apologize for this excursion, but I thought it might be of interest to spectators. Ms., is it, how do I pronounce your last name, please?
It's Yagjin, two syllables, it's Armenian, yes.
Ms. Yagjin, welcome to the meeting.
Thank you, thank you so much.
To make a public comment, if you would limit yourself to around six minutes or so, that would be great.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chairman Carroll and the members of Vermont State Board of Education. I have been attending some of the meetings and this is a particular, it's been particularly interesting to me because I am an educator and I'm also a parent of a child with a disability. So I'll tell you a little bit about myself first. My name is Krista Yagjin, as you, as you shared. I live in Guilford, Vermont, so in the southernmost part of the state. I'm a licensed special educator and I should also mention that I was first licensed and I am continued licensed as a reading specialist. So your discussion around dyslexia was interesting to me. I've worked with elementary-age students for over 20 years. I've worked in Vermont most of that time, but also in New Hampshire and in Massachusetts. In all of my work roles over the years, my responsibilities have also included coordinating EST and MTSS supports. I am also a parent to a curious map and Lego movie-loving 12-year-old son named Nate, who has Down Syndrome. In addition, I have been a member of the Vermont Developmental Disability Council for the past two years and am a new panel member on the state Special Education Advisory Panel. Although I am associated with several of the kind of stakeholder groups that have shared testimony, I wanted to share that I come as myself with my perspectives based on my lived experiences. To me, my perspective, as well as from the other parents and educators who have spoken, are important ones to hear as partners in practice. So I really appreciate this opportunity. My perspective. Today, I would like to speak to the special education rules, which are open to comment due to Act 173. I believe that this is an incredible opportunity to improve our educational support systems for all children, including those with disabilities. When I first came to, became a special educator in Vermont, I was introduced to the process of special education eligibility for our children ages six to 21 as three gates or doors. Does the child have a disability? If yes, does the disability have an adverse effect on the student's educational performance? If yes, to both, is the student in need of specialized instruction? While the process seems simple enough, I soon learned as a special educator that it wasn't. Federal guidelines include adverse effect as part of their first gate, stating that a disability must adversely affect a child's educational performance. In determining adverse effect in Vermont, evaluation teams need to show that a student is performing significantly below grade norms, which has been defined as the 15th percentile or below. This translates to 1.0 standard deviation or more below the mean or the equivalent, as reflected by performance on at least three of six measures of school performance, generally over a period of time. Huh! In two neighboring school districts where I had the great opportunity to work, this more narrow process for determining adverse effect was applied differently, specifically around interpretation and practice. What I learned in school is that this variability impacts equity. While the intention of creating more guidance was aimed to help out our schools and our students, I believe it is on the opposite, creating confusion and inequitable determination about whether or not students with disabilities get the instruction they are entitled to. I also think it's important to note how MTSS intersects with adverse effect. My experience is that MTSS systems vary greatly in schools for a lot of reasons. You all know this already, population, region, resources. Some students may be suspected of having a disability but not evaluated because a team has concluded that a student's needs are being met through MTSS. Yes, we know that we're not supposed to do that, but it happens. When they move to a neighboring school district, a student often needs to fail before the process of support restarts again. Also to note, an elementary school, this happens a lot where I work, may be able to meet a student's needs, but the student can move on to middle or high school and then not have their needs met until they are failing. Speaking of failing, the criteria used to determine if a student is performing in the lowest 15th percentile for adverse effect can look different from school to school, also based on factors such as population and the assessments that they're using. Well, the common practice is to rank students in classes based on some of the curriculum-based measures of academic skills used to determine if they're performing in the lowest 15th percentile. There's some grayness when the schools only have cohorts of 12 to 15 kids. In my school where I currently work, we have a, we have one cohort right now per, per grade and no more than 17 students in each cohort. For example, a class of 17 students would only allow for two to three eligible students if you were, went strictly by the lowest 15th percentile in that class. But it may be that four to five students are demonstrating significant delays compared to, you know, other classes in other schools or other, in terms of the grade level expectation. While the AOE offers guidance and recommendations, guidance is often interpreted differently, as you know, because we leave it up to local schools from school to school and district to district. And even though special education is now consolidated, which is a big change, there still is variance, especially between elementary schools and high schools within districts. On the other side of failure, there are the students with autism. Even though some students with autism are struggling greatly to access learning in school, their high academic performance on an achievement test or another classroom measure may inadvertently keep them from getting individualized special education services, the ones that they need. Functional documentation of social, emotional skills and executive functioning skills is not a primary focus of adverse effect in Vermont. An example may be that a student with autism who tests high may have few or, or few friends and struggle with understanding assignments and with work completion, thus fails and, and is really unable to receive the specialized instruction that they need. For myself, as a parent with a child who has a developmental disability, my son has Down Syndrome, my observation is that my team spent a fair amount of time documenting that my son Nate is performing indeed in the lowest 15th percentile in every area possible. It was a pretty, I would say, my mother, I was remembering, I was sharing with her, it was a pretty like grim day for us. There was more conversation about where he was failing academically than around his functioning across all areas of school, including social skills. For me, school's all of that experience. Honestly, I believe that he never received the social, emotional skills and supports he needed in school because of the system created. The part of his reevaluation focused more on academic deficits than his functional needs. I also want to speak to parental consent. As a parent of a child with Down Syndrome, I have attended many IEP meetings. For my child, this process has never been easy due to his expansive educational needs and the sheer number of people on this educational team. Often, I would be given draft after draft of an IEP and it wasn't clear which sections had or had not been updated. In some occasions, I would receive the official copy of the IEP and then realize there were parts about which I never agreed to. As a parent, I didn't feel there was a procedural way for me to share or give consent to what I did or did not agree to in the IEP. Frankly, the process for disagreeing and documenting my concerns was overwhelming. At one point, I considered, I considered filing an administrative complaint, but really struggled, struggled with the documentation needed to show my continued concerns around IEP implementation. If the process included a role, an opportunity for me to be able to give consent or partial consent to the IEP, I feel like I would be a more respected team member. So my asks and considerations. I believe adverse effect is a very important part of the eligibility process, but the current rules for how this is defined in Vermont needs to change. Please consider removing this very rigid criteria established by Vermont and include social, emotional skills as part of the section. There is variability in how parents are included in the IEP development process. Please consider the practice in our neighboring states like New Hampshire that allows for parents to give consent or partial consent to IEPs. In closing, I believe you have a great, incredible opportunity here to improve the systems that support all learners. Some of our special education systems related to Rule 2360 are clearly not working. The current AOE special education team makes me super hopeful for better professional development for schools in the future. But I truly believe that won't be enough until there are systemic changes. As you said, the rules need to change. I hope that you take advantage of this opportunity to refine the rules, work with stakeholder groups to change and improve our special education process. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Yagjin, that was an excellent statement. May we have that in writing as well?
Yes, I will give it to you. I had, I sent a draft, but I will send an updated one.
Yes, if you would send draft to Kim Gleason.
Okay.
Then she'll see to it that her committee gets to see your, your written comments. Thank you very much.
You're welcome, thank you.
Dan, I see your hand is up, but before I have you speak, Dan, with the time remaining, you're okay? Okay, thank you. I just want to check to see if there are any other members of the public who are, who wish to be heard. Suzanne, can you see anybody else that we've not recognized?
John, I, I see that there are people here, but unfortunately, I do not know if any wish to speak.
So any of you who are with us and have not spoken but wish to speak to the board on, on the topic at hand, please pipe up, we're about to otherwise wrap up the meeting. All right then. So I think we are at or very close to the end. It says on the screen, five minutes left in the meeting. Yep. So any final comments, questions, observations? I'm just, I just would say, there seem to be two outstanding questions, big outstanding questions. One is how to address MTSS, if at all. I'm not prejudging it, but if you want to do something about MTSS, what's that look like? Where does it go? And if it goes in a different rule, what's that process look like? And Dan's office will try to shed some light on that. Then the second question, Emily, I see is still on. The second question will be, how, if, if Kim and the committee come back and say, we're really, really cramped here with this schedule that we're on, how do we stretch out the, the rulemaking process that we're in? That, and Emily, you seem to suggest that maybe we would approach either the Secretary of State or the Elkar to see if we might get an extension of a couple of months on this rulemaking process. I guess a third question for you, Emily, is where do we stand with the advisory group and the agency on their 2220, 2220 rulemaking process mandated by Act 173? Are we, are we on track with the timeline that you and Judy put together? So if you could address these questions offline with us, why don't you copy Kim on anything about 1360, 132360? And copy, if you wouldn't mind, Oliver, who is chairing a committee on 2220? If you would copy Oliver on where things stand with the 2220 work that the advisory group and the agency are doing? And when, and maybe, do you want to make any tinkerings to the timeline? So are there any other things that should be said? Kim?
I just wanted to double check, but if our, our deadline for completion with Elkar is the end of June, I think I heard you say, when is our deadline to hand off the, the final version to Elkar?
Emily, can you, from the top of your head, reconstruct that?
No, but I can refer to the written timeline and answer that question.
Yes, if you would, please. I have somewhere.
Me too.
Yeah. Too many papers. So what I have, Emily, is that at the January meeting, present proposed SBE final rules for approval. SBE to discuss proposed final rules and amend as necessary. So that is that, and at the January meeting, the board would approve SBE final rules. So the answer to your question, I think, Kim, is the way we currently have it written is we would adopt final rules for 132360 in January. I think that's very tight sneakers. And then from that, then in mid-February, it goes to Elkar. I'm sorry, in late January, it goes to Elkar. Elkar has 45 days or so to act, and by early May, the final rules would become effective. That's in the present timeline. Emily, just another detail about that. Would you mind sending to Kim a copy of the, of the timeline that you and Judy developed so she can see this? So the question would be, with Elkar's permission, could we slide things back three or four months so that the rules don't go into effect in early May, but they go into effect in July or August? In so, in doing so, we're still way ahead of the, the revised deadlines that were visualized in Act 12, 112, that was passed in June. We're still way ahead of that because these rules are not to be, to be, go, are not to go into effect under statute until July of 2021. So let's see if we can, if we can find some elbow room there so that you folks have the time you need and the board has the time it needs.
John, that's July of 2022, correct?
I think I misspoke. Yes, July of 2022. Pardon me. Yes, thank you. Thank you, yes. So even if we slid the effective date to August of this year, that leave, of next year, that leaves virtually 12 months before they go into effect.
And I think, I think time to be considered in the context of budgeting for school districts and, and matters like that. So I, I think that that's important. I would not have interest enough pushing it past a time where it's useful for districts to do their planning from a budgetary standpoint. But it, it does seem, I, I think for us to take in thoughts from some experts in the beginning of January, formulate a recommendation, have thorough conversation with board, making sure all their questions are fleshed out, I do think it unlikely we'll be able to approve a final set of rules in January. I don't know that it's impossible for February or, you know, certainly by March, I would think, but I am understanding it to require 45 days with Elkar. So I think maybe backing up from a July 1 or, or an August 1 date and figuring out what our target is to get them our final draft would be helpful. So thank you, Emily, to whatever extent this, we can know our hard deadlines so that we'll be ready to make sure these rules are done the best way they can and serve the districts as they're planning.
So, yeah, let me just ask about that. What is the consensus, Dan, and you, Kim, also? When do the districts need to see these new rules in order to be doing their budgeting for the following year?
Yeah, I mean, we have to, I think, understand how the delay will play out relative to the budgeting cycle a little better in that, you know, with the service plan and so forth, we have to make a transition at some point. So I would think, you know, at least having the rules stable by July of the preceding budget year would be useful.
Is that a July 1, do you think, Dan, or by the end of July?
I think end of July is fine.
All right. So, so Emily, if you and Judy could rebuild the timeline to, so that the rules are going to effect end of July, and then seek concurrence or permission from Elkar and/or the Secretary of State for that revised schedule, that I think would buy this board and this committee two or three months, which would be really, right now, very valuable. Keeping in mind, of course, that if, when the committee comes to the board at a meeting and makes a series of recommendations, we cannot vote on those at that meeting. As a rule, unless it's an emergency, we would need to wait a meeting so that both the public and the board have an opportunity. So Emily, are these requests making sense to you?
They do. I won't show you my paper where I scratched out the various asks as they morphed, but I've had it now.
It's a long list. It's a long revised list. Yes, yes.
I'm sorry. Thank you, though.
It's a work in progress. All right. We're a little past due time. Any final comments? All right then, is there a motion to adjourn this meeting?
So moved.
It's been moved by Oliver. Is there a second? I see Kim is seconding. All those in favor of adjourning the meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. And thanks go again to Suzanne Sprague for all her support for this meeting today and in the month leading up to it. Thank you all. Stay safe.
Thank you all.
Have a good holiday.
Thanks for our guest. Bye-bye. Happy holidays, everyone.